Good evening, everyone. We are going to call the regular commission meeting for the city of Deltona for Monday, December 13, 2021, to order. It's the last meeting of the year. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Villa Vasquez.
Present.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner McCool.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Commissioner Sosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
Here.
Mayor Hersberg.
Here. May we all please stand for the invocation, the pledge to the flag, and this evening, singing our national anthem, will be sixth grader from Trinity School, David Castro. And David is 12 years old, and we're glad to have him back. He did a fantastic job at our other event. So if you'll all bow your heads, tonight I'm honored to present the invocation for the last commission meeting of the year. Soon we'll begin another new year, and let us all look back and reflect on 2021 and what it's meant to all of us, our neighbors, our friends, our family, and especially those that we don't know. Let us pray for peace, good health, and humanity for 2022. Let us always look at those around us, and even those that may be smiling, may not, inside. Let us make 2022 a year that, even if it may be challenging, brings kindness to our hearts and spreads that to everyone that we can. Even if we're having a rough day, sometimes it's just good to reach out and give a smile to someone that maybe hasn't had that. So I wish all of you, I wish our first responders, our fire department, our sheriff's department, EMS, those that will have a busy next few weeks, I offer you our prayers and thank you for all that you do. For Deltona City staff, thank you so much for your hard work and leadership this year. Let us pray for a bigger, brighter, and more wonderful 2022. Amen. Commissioner King, would you like to lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the tunderly light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose but stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Or the rapids we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave? Thank you so much, David. Okay, we're going to go ahead and begin our business meeting. Item 4A is approval of the meeting minutes of the regular commission meeting of November 15, 2021.
Time moved.
Second.
Properly moved by Vice Mayor Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ramos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed. Motion passes unanimously. And now we will move on to our fun part of the evening, presentations, awards, and reports. Before we continue, Mr. Peters, did you have something that you wanted to talk about with the agenda this evening, sir? Mr. Peters, did you want to mention what we're doing with the agenda this evening before we begin the presentations, awards, and reports?
Madam Mayor, I wish to pull items 8B and 8L off the agenda for tonight.
8B and 8L?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, not on our agenda this evening. Before we begin with the superstar students of the month, I would like to please call up to the podium our new District 4 commander, Captain Kyle McDaniel. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself. Thank you to the citizens of Deltona. Just real quick, I want to give a little bit of brief history about myself. I've been with the county of Volusia for about 22 years. In that time, I've served in the city of Deltona for quite some time. I served as a patrol sergeant in Deltona. I served as a CID sergeant in Deltona. I recently served as a district lieutenant in Deltona. So I've spent some time in the city of Deltona. I've really grown to appreciate the citizens of Deltona and the staff. I appreciate the opportunity to come back here and lead the men and women who serve the city of Deltona. I look forward to what 2022 has to bring for everyone, and we put 2021 in the taillights. So I appreciate it. I look forward to working with everybody, and that's all I got. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir, and welcome. We appreciate it. Okay, now we'll go ahead and -- Okay, sorry, Lee. Now we'll go ahead and do the superstar student of the month certificates for November 2021. Okay, I'm just going to, because there was no audio with that. Are we done, Lee? I'm going to go ahead and read the names. From Discovery Elementary was Mia Vasquez, 5th grade. Timbercrest Elementary, Stella Eels King, 4th grade. Deltona Lakes Elementary, Haley Hamm, 2nd grade. Enterprise Elementary, Harper Edgar, 1st grade. Friendship Elementary, Zoe Haywood, 5th grade. Pride Elementary, Keegan Garcia, 5th grade. Spirit Elementary, Sophia Castillo, 5th grade. Sunrise Elementary, Kayden Hoffman, 4th grade. Deltona Middle, Melanie Rodriguez, 6th grade. Galaxy Middle, Fernando David Pereiro, 6th grade. Also, Galaxy Middle, Chloe Mayby, 7th grade. Heritage Middle is Francis Roman, 6th grade. Pine Ridge High School is Caleb Foster, 10th grade. And Deltona High is Yanaris Fabiola Munoz Perez, 11th grade, early graduate. So if we can give them all a round of applause, the final superstars for 2021. Okay, now we'll move ahead to ordinances and public hearings. Item 6A is a public hearing, ordinance number 02-2022, redistricting and otherwise revising city commission districts based on the 2020 U.S. Census at first reading. Mr. Paradise.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ron Paradise, Community Services, for the record. Ordinance number 02-2022 represents the once every 10-year redistricting of political boundaries, sorry, as a result of the 2020 census. According to the 2020 census, the city now has a population of 93,701, which is an increase of approximately 8,500 people within the last 10 years. On October 25, 21, at a workshop, city commission directed staff to keep the districts as close as possible while still adhering to appropriate representation thresholds. With that direction, staff proposes the city be redistricting to represent basically the same district boundaries as they currently exist today, with the exception that District 6 will expand to account for a 10-acre annexation that occurred within that area in 2018. The proposed redistricting effort will accomplish the following: the districts will minimize voter confusion, because they'll pretty much be essentially the same; no minority or ethnic populations will be disenfranchised as a result of this redistricting effort; population within districts are within the accepted representation thresholds, which is about 10%. The biggest variance is a little over 6% between the populations of the districts. And there's a possibility some of these minor differences can be addressed through development we anticipate to come online in the next five years. With that being said, city staff recommends the city commission approve ordinance number 02-2022 on first reading and set a final hearing for January 18, 2022. I'd be happy to field any questions you all may have with regard to this item.
We're having a computer glitch right now, so is there any commissioners on the board?
Yes.
Who said that? Commissioner Ramos, please go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a quick question, and maybe this will be addressed to either Mr. Peters, or I know Stacy has been part of the charter review committee. Like you mentioned, I do know that in our workshop, we mentioned that we had consent of keeping it the way it is. But my understanding is that in the charter review committee, the last meeting that they had, they said that we were supposed to, not necessarily, that we were supposed to redistrict. I just want to put it on the record and make sure we're doing the right thing. So I'm not sure if maybe legal can help here as well.
I think I can provide some insight along those lines.
Okay, thank you. Just so that we can have clarification.
Yeah, and some of this is a little bit semantical, but reading verbatim from the charter, there's one sentence that involves redistricting, and it reads the district boundaries, and I think this is 91B of the charter. The district boundaries shall be revised every 10 years based on population figures following the release of Census Trac data. Those district boundaries were revised, they're revised, many of them to remain the same. District 6 was revised to take into account expansion of the city boundaries.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners on the board? Okay, any public comment? None? Okay. Do we have a motion? Mayor, you back? Yeah, yeah, we're back. Sorry, I couldn't, didn't have a speaker's list, so, okay, there we go.
It's working.
Commissioner Ramos, thank you.
Thank you. I hereby move to adopt ordinance number 02-2022, revising the six city districts as per the 2020 U.S. Census, and schedule a second and final hearing for January 18, 2022. The acting city manager has the authority of make corrections of scribbling errors and the like.
Secondly. Properly moved by Commissioner Ramos, seconded by Vice Mayor Bradford. Could you read the ordinance, please, Mr. Fowler?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 02-2022, an ordinance of the city of Deltona, Florida, providing commission district boundaries for election purposes. Said commission district boundaries having been established pursuant to Section 9, Part 1, Part B of the Charter of the city of Deltona, Florida, repealing all other ordinances in conflict. Herewith, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion, a second. We've gone through public comment and read the ordinance. May we vote, please? Motion passes seven to zero. We will see this then for second reading. We'll move on to item B, a public hearing. This is what we're pulling, correct, sir? No, this is 6A, I'm sorry. 6, not 8. 6B, public hearing, ordinance number 06-2021, amending ordinance number 21-2009 as amended by ordinance number 10-2018, representing a major amendment to the Deltona Village Business Planned Unit Development, the BPUD, to incorporate eight separate parcels totaling approximately 10.3 acres to the BPUD and vacating certain lots and right-of-ways associated with various additions to the Davis Park plat. Mr. Paradise.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ron Perez, Community Services, again. This is a rezoning. This is a quasi-judicial decision before the city commission. I'd like to turn the floor over to our esteemed legal counsel to conduct the swearing-in and a primer on quasi-judicial hearings, including the ex parte communication disclosure.
I may not be esteemed, but I am the legal counsel on this matter. Do you want to, do you want to, do you ask each of the members of the commission to disclose any ex parte?
Yes.
And then I'll swear the witnesses in.
You want to do that first?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead, and Liz, can you just go ahead down the roll and go through and ask?
Commissioner Villa Vasquez.
No communications other than to drive by.
Commissioner King.
I have no ex parte communication. I have driven by the property.
Commissioner McCool.
No ex parte, but I have driven by the property.
Commissioner Ramos.
No ex parte, but I do drive by the air.
Commissioner Sosa.
I talked to Mr. Bryant out in the parking lot for a brief second and drove by the property.
Vice Mayor Bradford. No ex parte communications, have driven by the parcel.
And Mayor Hersberg.
No ex parte communication and driven by the parcel in my normal driving route.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone who wants to offer testimony in this matter please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that you're going to tell the truth to the city commission this evening? It'll help you guide. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia.
Okey-dokey. Now, we'll pass that formality. This involves the inclusion of eight parcels into the Deltona Village Business Plan Unit Development, totals 10.3 acres, involves the vacation of certain antiquated lots and right-of-ways. Nothing has changed since the city commission heard and approved this on first hearing last month. I'll be happy to field any questions you all have with regard to this.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Paradise? Let's see, Commissioner Sosa.
I just have one question. I know we're adding 10 acres to the BPUD. Out of that, how much of that acreage is going to be city right-of-way that we'll be vacating?
One.
One acre total?
Yep.
All right, thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, any other commission questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Paradise. Would the applicant like to come up? Do you have anything?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Attorney Kim Booker, on behalf of the applicant. We are here just to answer any questions. My address is 1019 Town Center Drive, Orange City, Florida, for the record, 32763.
Thank you.
We have nothing further to add.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant's attorney? Seeing none? No? Okay. Hey, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor. Albert Bryant, please.
Hmm, let's see here. We're vacating 10.3 acres. Hmm. And somebody took off the agenda something else later on tonight, where we're being asked to pay for property to put a road through this area. But we're vacating 10.3 acres here. I hope that by vacating 10.3 acres, we get something in return. Now, I understand, Mayor, that this is quasi-judicial, but the city has obligation to represent the citizens as well as business. By vacating this property, how are we actually helping the citizens here? You represent the citizens. So you have to give a reason why vacating this property is helping the citizens, because if you're getting something for something for nothing, that's considered vacating it, correct? So are they vacating the area where we're going to put a road through that will only basically help the businesses in the area, it won't really particularly help the citizens other than maybe relieve some roadway congestion? Something to think about as we move forward with this. I don't have a problem with vacating the land. What I have a problem with is the fact that, where does it go? What does it lead to? Why? Nobody's explained how it actually helps the citizens by vacating this land, other than, oh, we're helping the landowner to be able to build more, or maybe add a little parking lot here, or a retention pond there, or whatever. That's basically all this little agenda says. And in some cases, it says it doesn't help anything anywhere to vacate the land. So at the end of the day, what you really need to think about, are we vacating this land just to please the landowner? So we have to pay for the right-of-way, for the normality, or for the Rhode Island extension?
Thank you, sir.
That closes public comments.
Thank you very much. So, Commissioners, any other comments, questions, anything for Mr. Paradise? Commissioner Sosa.
Yeah, just to make sure I read this right, we're not vacating 10.3 acres. We're adding 10.3 acres into the BPUD. But out of that, where it's all separated, we're basically just giving up pieces of right-of-way in front of the different parcels, not the actual 10 acres. That is correct, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
These are right-of-ways from a 1920s plat that go nowhere, never been maintained, are only on paper.
Good, Commissioner Sosa?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have gone through the formal process of the quasi-judicial hearing, and now we are to the point where we need a motion and a second. Okay, Vice Mayor?
I hereby move to adopt ordinance number 06-2021, by adding eight parcels totaling approximately 10.3 acres to the Deltona Village Business Plan Unit Development, and vacating certain lots and right-of-ways associated with the Davis Park subdivision. Updating the Deltona Village BPUD/MDP, the acting city manager has the authority to make corrections of scribbling errors and the like.
Zach Juggin.
And that's a chorus of seconds. Was that you, Commissioner Sosa?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Properly moved by Vice Mayor Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Sosa. Mr. Fowler, will you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 06-2021, an ordinance of the city of Deltona, Florida, for a major amendment to the Deltona Village Business Plan Unit Development, BPUD, to add eight, eight separate parcels consisting of a total of 10.3 acres to be included within the Deltona Village PUD and rezoned to be PUD, and vacating certain lots and public rights-of-way associated with the eight separate parcels, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, before you all vote, in keeping with the quasi-judicial nature of this, I would humbly suggest that you call for a roll call vote, with every member giving a rationale for their vote.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Paradise. So we have a motion, we have a second, the ordinance has been read, and now, Liz, will you go ahead and do the roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Villa Vasquez.
Yes, it's meeting all the requirements.
Commissioner King.
Yes, it does meet the requirements of the comprehensive plan.
Commissioner McCool.
Yes, it meets the requirements.
Commissioner Ramos.
Yes, it meets the comprehension plan.
Commissioner Sosa.
Yes, it meets the requirement.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
Yes, it meets all the requirements of the comp plan and the strategic plan.
And Vice, I'm sorry, Mayor Hersberg.
Yes, and this also meets all the requirements that are put forth by our ordinances and our comp plan.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we will now move on to item 6C, a public hearing, resolution number 2021-62, acceptance of the final plat, SD 21-0007, Vineland Reserve, Phase 2. Mr. Paradise.
Ron Paradise, Community Services, for the record. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution number 2021-62 is the acceptance of a final plat for Phase 2 of the Vineland Reserve project. The Vineland Reserve project is located northward of the Doyle Road corridor, just to the west of the intersection of Doyle Road and State Road 415. Phase 2 involves the plating of about 41 acres, more specifically, 40.97 acres of land, and results in the creation of 152 single-family detached or individual residential lots. As with any final plat acceptance request, comments and review are centered around technical elements of the plat and consistency with established city policy. Technical matters include the provision of utilities, roadways, and just ensuring that the project is functional and also complies with Florida statutes 177. With that being said, the Vineland Reserve Phase 2 final plat request is technically sufficient and consistent with all city policy. Staff recommends the city commission approve resolution number 2021-62 and authorize the mayor and others to sign the plat as appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Paradise. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Paradise? Commissioner McCool, Commissioner Sosa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ron, I just want to make sure that I am reading this plat correctly. So we have gone over all of the comp plan within this development via Phase 1. Is that correct?
Actually, that was a determination of a 19, excuse me, a 2016 policy decision that resulted in the rezoning for the property. And this plat is consistent with that residential plan unit development approved by the city in 16.
Okay, so they're ready to, they're ready to build, in essence, right?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Do you know offhand if the property has been cleared yet?
Most of this property was pasture when it was rezoned, and I know that there's been some work out there done under a preliminary plat.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask at this time, I guess, point of order, if I'm able to make commentary on this, as it's not, this is not quasi-judicial, correct?
Nope, not quasi-judicial. It's a resolution.
So I would like to just make a comment, if I can, about this development. We have here, and I know that we follow this book right here, it's our comprehensive plan and future land use element, right, for all of our developments. And I would hope that the developer would take at heart our efforts in this comprehensive plan for conservation and future use, because I'm telling you, I'm pretty much in tears driving around Deltona, even by me. We just had a tree like this big, and land is being cleared en masse. I'm talking about clear cut. And we are losing character in Deltona over this, because it's profitable and it's the easiest thing to do, and it's, and it's slack is what it is. So-- So although I've tried, I'm following the letter of the law with our development as a city commissioner for my district and in my city, that I love, I want to bring it to point that when these developers build in these developments, and this is not really just pointed at this developer, but I hope that they're hearing this, that preservation is important of the beautiful resources that we have. And I hope that they will take note of that moving forward to develop here. There's pretty much not anything that I can do as one commissioner to say, okay. But looking at these cookie cutter houses, it just makes me sad. I'm hoping that we're preserving some of the beautiful nature out there. You know, I've driven by the property, not recently, but driven by there. So that's my commentary on this. Think about this, and then using what materials you can that are environmentally friendly out here. It's going to happen. And again, there's nothing that I can do about it. But Deltona is beautiful, and we need to work harder with our developers on that point of preserving the beauty. We have two developments that I can speak of right now that we've done a crap job on of preserving the natural beauty of the area. We could have done a lot better, and we didn't. So I hope, moving forward, that developers are put, and builders are put on notice about taking care of our resources in our beautiful town. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sosa?
I've had a conversation with a couple residents, and I know, I've driven up Collins Road in that, and I believe that whole property's been clear cut already. Which leads to one of the questions that I had was, what type of buffer will be put at the back of this property? Will you be installing a wall, or will there be some natural buffer put up? And I'm trying to read the plan here, but I can't see the small print on how much of buffer it is between Collins Road. According to the PUD, there was intended, or there will be, a buffer along that Collins Road corridor. I do not remember the exact width of it, but I do recollect that it was supposed to be bermed as well. And if, you know, I can access that information and email the city manager if that's the case. Yeah, it looks like they have a 20-foot buffer afforded here, and it also includes drainage as well. And I think, you know, some of that obviously implies that it's going to be utilitarian in nature. Okay. Now, are they going to put a wall up? No, no, they're not going to put a wall. Are we going to put some vegetation separating Collins? Yes. Because I know on the Collins roadside, that's pretty much, you know, pretty good-sized acreage over there. I know some people with two to six acres over that way, and they had some concerns about that. Another question they had, or concern they had, is construction vehicles. How will they be entering the property? According to the PUD, all those construction vehicles and all the activity is supposed to come off of Doyle Road. Collins Road was decided or determined to be pretty much off limits. Now, I have been working with, you know, certain residents out there, and they're very active in informing that, yeah, there is, you know, rogue use, if you will, of that roadway. And we often have to call the builder and remind them that, hey, look, your subcontractors and so forth need to respect the fact that they're supposed to all be coming off of Doyle Road. It's further also complicated by the fact that there's been some work done on a cell tower that's associated with this area, and the only access for that cell tower happens to be off Collins Road. And, you know, they bring in heavy equipment to service that cell tower. Not all of it's cell tower traffic, by any stretch of the imagination. Okay. Well, will the builder be providing maybe some signs on Collins Road, you know, indicating that there should be no construction traffic coming up Collins? There is no requirement for them to do that in the PUD, but we can certainly inquire about that. I mean, if that's something they're willing to do. I know the residents, what's done is done, and the residents are, you know, going to be okay with the ones that I've talked to that are okay with the building. But they want to ensure the integrity of Collins Road, that no construction equipment will be coming up there. And, you know, some signs could be posted to deter the construction crews from coming through Collins. Yeah, we will interface with the contractor and the builders on this to see, you know, if they'd be willing to put up some signage. We'd also have to check with Public Works, and I'm not sure exactly where on that corridor would be appropriate to put those signs, but that's something we have to look into. It's obviously, that does run through some unincorporated areas as well. Correct. Yes. All right, thank you.
Commissioner McCool?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last comment is also, with that being said, thank you for that, Mr. Sosa. Like I said, I haven't been out there in a bit, so thank you for saying that. That I would like to pass along the sentiment. Again, this is just a sentiment and has no staying power by my, you know, powers, that quit planting cheap trees also, if developers and builders are listening to this. Because at the time, that I think that you can afford to throw away dumpsters of unused material, that we could do a little better with what we're choosing to plant and back into our environment as well. We've worked a long time with the bare minimum of, you know, just getting by what we can plant. But we love Deltona, and we want to beautify Deltona, so consider that when you're replanting what you have to replant and keep Deltona beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramos, and then Vice Mayor, and then Commissioner Avila-Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to follow up in reference to Commissioner Sosa, which he brings a good point, and I know, Ron, you kind of like mentioned it. But I'm just wondering, Mr. Peters, as it relates to signage, anything that's on our property, I think we do have signage, we do signage in-house. So I think if there's any signage that we can provide, I think it's something that should be looked in, and maybe reach out to the county so that we can provide some signage there, being that we do signage in-house.
Is that possible?
We will make the best effort. That's all I can give you right now.
Vice Mayor?
Question. If a developer takes trees down, there is in the comp plan, I believe, a requirement of what they're allowed to put up, correct? Is it the comp plan? I know if there is a, say, live oak taken down, then there's a comp tree that has to be put up. Or if they want to put a pine tree or palm tree up in place, instead of one, they have to have three. So I guess if it's something that, you know, this commission's not liking, the trees and substitutes, and that might be something that we need to bring forward if, you know, we feel that we're not replacing them with adequate trees. But I do know, when trees come down, they do require them to go back up. So I don't know if that's something that we need to review, or you guys feel that we're adequately, you know, planting enough of the live oaks back in there? Because I do see a lot of palms going up.
Yeah, and that's based on Chapter 98, the Tree Protection and the Land Development Code. They kind of articulate a standard of cross-sectional replacement. There is an option to pay into a tree fund, of which the city goes out and plants trees and other landscaping materials.
And how many people take advantage of the tree fund option?
It's very common.
So that they'll take advantage of the tree fund versus planting their own trees?
Yep.
And what do we generally do? Do we generally do the minimum? Or are we putting in, you know, something comparable to what was removed?
We pretty much just put in what's appropriate for landscaping. You know, the size and so forth, it isn't comparable often to what is removed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Avila-Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. One of my questions was the same as Vice Mayor's, and, you know, was about, do we, are they required to replace trees as they take them down? So you answered that question. Is it an HOA community? Is it going to be an HOA?
It will be, yes, ma'am.
Is it going to be gated, or just going to be?
No.
No gate committee? All right, thank you.
Mr. Paradise, there's no one else on the board. I have a question regarding the trees and the tree removal and the requirements. Does any of this fall under the state statute that was passed in 2019 regarding tree removal?
I don't think so, no.
So that doesn't, I know it's individual, that we have basically no control?
That's correct.
Over what goes on on an individual property site?
Yeah, and that's pretty much been a longstanding part of our tree replacement or tree protection regulations, is that single-family dwelling units were exempt. I think there may be some exceptions for historic or exceptional trees, but...
Not anymore, unless you have an arborist come in.
I think you're right.
I know, because the state passed that, that we have no say-so in preserving any type of tree, whether it's on, you know, on property that's privately owned as a home or business. They can do what they want, provided they can get an arborist to declare that. And that was my question. Does that apply at all to any developments?
We have not applied that to these developments.
But the state doesn't preempt that? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
The state statute does not preempt what we would, what we could declare that we want?
That's correct.
In replacement trees?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McCool?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say, correct, right, that it landowners' rights, I'm getting that all day long. I'm respectful of that, because they invest money and they invest time, and I understand that. But you cannot replace 50, 75, or 100-year growth. You can't replace that. So my point was, and I can't do anything about it, I can't tell them what to do, but I can make it known that it is, it's, you know, it's just a short way out. And it's disrespectful to the environment, it's disrespectful to the community. We don't take time to nurture what natural beauty you can save. We have a responsibility, as humans that are inhabiting this area right now, to take care of that. So no, I can't tell them what to do. I can't really shame them, you know, into doing it. But I can make my, what my residents have said and what others have said about being a good steward of our environment here. You can't replace 50 years of growth. And given the choice, usually people are going to take the cheaper way out, because the point is to return a profit. So no, legally, I can't do anything. The only thing I can do is this right here, so I'm doing this right here. We need to be better stewards of our property in Deltona. And when developers and builders come in, they need to understand that we have a different expectation of what it is to nurture our community and our environment. I love our developers, I love our builders, I just want there to be a pause to understand that Deltona is a living, breathing thing. It's just not to be clear cut. And there's a responsibility to take care. Because developers who usually profit the most invest the least in our community. So my God, I'm just asking you to take a moment to think about what you're cutting down. It's just really sad. And I'm sorry, but this is the only opportunity that I've had in a while to talk about this issue. And we're talking about keeping Deltona beautiful. We're talking about picking up the trash. We're talking about nurturing our people. So when you come in here to build, understand that we are nurturing our environment here, and we need to do better when you come in to build in Deltona. We're not to be, we don't want to be clear cut. That is the reason, a lot of our residents are against development, is because the clear-cutting, slash-and-burn way that we've been approaching it. And it has to stop. And the only way to get it to stop is to talk about it honestly. So that's what I'm doing. I'm not anti-development. I am pro-responsible and beautiful development. Please don't misconstrue my words. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So my comment, Commissioner McCool, was to determine, because the state has preempted every municipality from telling the landowner what they can do on their own property. You have an example on Saxon Boulevard there. You have an example on Saxon and Finland, where the house, they took down, I don't know how many trees, the new owners. And that is perfectly legal, because the state has preempted us and every other city and county from telling people that they cannot take those trees down. You have to get, the loophole is, you have to get an arborist to come in there and tell you that it can go down, it can't go down. Arborists magically are now a dime a dozen. So you have a whole industry that goes around okaying trees to be cut down. It's not only a problem in Deltona. My point was, does that apply to planned developments? You're telling me it does not apply?
We have held all these developments to the letter of Chapter 98 and Tree Protection.
Okay. And that was the reason for my question, because you have not only clear cutting on single-family lots, which has been the case for a long time. When I first moved here, they banded the trees in the lots, and then they came out and said, okay, these trees are good to stay. And the next day, they bulldozed every single thing down. And nobody ever came back and checked.
Yep.
And that was under Volusia County before we incorporated. And that still goes on now, as you look at every infill lot is clear cut.
Yep.
Now, again, we have had tree standards, they've never applied to single-family homes. Am I correct, Mr. Paradise?
That is correct.
Thank you. So people can wipe out what they can wipe out on their own property. Even the city, prior to the state preempting us, never had that. So, Mr. Paradise, we have Commissioner McCool, one more time. Commissioner McCool?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand absolutely what you're talking about and what you're saying. And I know that you are a steward of our town also, right? But what is legal is not always necessarily right. I mean, prostitution is legal, but we don't want it in Deltona, do we? So I'm just saying that we can do better. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I hereby move to adopt resolution number 2021-62, accepting the final plat, SD 21-0007, Vineland Reserve Phase Two, and approve the mayor to sign the plat. The acting city manager has the authority to make correction of scrivener errors and the like.
Is there a second? Public comment will come after the motion, the second.
Second.
Motion has been properly made by Vice Mayor Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Avila-Vasquez. Has anyone signed up for public comment?
Please be advised that the applicant is here too. And I think the applicant would like to speak.
Would you like to speak before or after public comment?
Before, it's mine.
I'm sorry, before?
Yes, ma'am. Hi, Michelle White, I'm with Zeppeh and Associates, the engineer of record for the project. I just wanted to say a couple things, because you guys are...
Could you pull the mic a little closer? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, no problem. Just wanted to say a couple things, because there is a landscape buffer incorporated into the plan, and then the plan was approved through the site development process, and we did meet a tree mitigation requirements. All the historic trees were preserved in the layout when we laid out the plan originally. And we've also had an arborist on-site during construction monitoring the health of the tree, and he checked it every couple of weeks of special, specific trees that were important to the construction of the project, to make sure they are preserved. A couple other things. Oh, and then the developers spent about $100,000 into the tree mitigation fund just for the Phase Two portion of this project. So just so you know that, there is money being contributed to the tree mitigation fund in addition to the preservation. So everything was done per code. And it's actually, the developer came in and revised the plan to make it better than code, because originally it was code minimum. And then they said, you know what, we want more. So they went and revised the plan, we got more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have three from there. Lori Warnick?
Oh, wait.
Hi, just want to introduce myself, Mike Macquarie with Lennar Homes. Just want to be able to reserve the right to respond to any questions, concerns that the public might have. With regards to Ms. McCool, I do want to respond to you. I too am a steward of the land. For instance, my, at the university I attended, I was the founder and president of the environmental club. So I know what it's like to be so concerned with the land, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Public comment?
Lori, I'm sorry, Lori Warnick, then Randy Priest, and then Linda Patterson. Lori Warnick, please.
Hi, I'm Lori Warnick. I've been here before, and I am not against development. And I do, I would invite every one of you to please come out and look at our subdivision area. And I am very proud that Lennar Homes is going to be doing the building. I worked for a contractor 35 years. We did a lot of work for Lennar back in the 80s. There's a lot of other builders I would rather not see there. But it is true, the property that has been cleared and developed was complete hayfields, not a tree in sight, except for the few they saved over on the far... for the few they saved over on the far corner. I purchased and bought my land in 1999 and built a house, and when I submitted my blueprints to the city of Deltona, I had to write every tree on my property, and I had to name what tree it was. And then I was told by the city what I could and couldn't remove on my two-and-a-half-acre parcel, and I followed the rules and I built my house. The property that they're getting ready to develop is full of trees. Now, we talk about a barrier. Right now, there is a natural barrier. If they leave that natural barrier of trees 20 feet and not touch it, we're one step ahead. There was not a barrier at the old property, so I would like, and I would like to address the fact that there are natural barriers right now that do not have to be replaced if they use them. Second of all, I spoke to a few people in Lennar, and they actually offered to put signs up. I actually had a guy's name, and he was happy to put signs up to keep the property. But I actually have pictures of, this was not Lennar, this was Brockman when they first developed the property, and I'd like to leave them here. The gate is 90% of the time open, I've shut it many a times, the locks do not work. I'm going to leave these with you. That's Brockman pulling right out of the property onto our property, onto our Collins Road. There's the gate completely down, drivable. Back in March 2021, we had an emergency in our neighborhood, and for some reason, the paramedics thought it was a drive-through, and they got stuck in the dirt and couldn't make it to our emergency down Riggs Road. This is the guy putting the curbs in. He said no one ever told him he wasn't allowed to drive on our road, Collins. And this is heavy equipment sitting on our road outside the gate, drove down our road from another gate, and the city of Deltona does not maintain Collins Road. It's a fight, I believe, between Volusia County and the city. We have potholes and stuff, but they don't maintain it at all, but yet equipment's driving up and down. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Can you just give that to the, those pictures to the clerks that we can all get a copy? Thank you very much.
Randy Priest, please.
Randy Priest, we live directly across from the second plat that's fixing to be cleared. There are so many trees there that if they would just leave them as a natural barrier, we wouldn't even have to replace with twigs that they're going to replace out there. Our kids are growing up there, they hate seeing the destruction because we're, you know, fostering all the natural habitat, and I wish you were here in 2016 to help fight for that. So you guys all have the opportunity now for all these new places coming in to turn them away. Turn them away when they want to clear all the trees, don't allow it, but I would just encourage that they can leave a natural barrier of woods that are already established, trees that are established. And if I didn't come make my voice heard today, what they want to do in the future, I'll have no say-so. So that's why I made an appearance with my certified letter that came in the mail that had, I didn't even sign for, they ripped it off and put it in my mailbox, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Linda Patterson, please.
I'm Linda Patterson, I live on Collins Road. I thought this was all settled five years ago, I thought it was being approved for the whole thing that they were doing, the townhouses and the two sections of houses. Now you're coming back saying, no, we got a Plan B. What happened? Also, Lauren said there, but that land has been cleared, the one section is cleared, it's got the sewer lines in, it's got streets in, it's got all, you can't drive down Collins Road with heavy equipment. Years ago, when the one pit, we call it the pit, across from this on Collins Road, when he lost all his orange trees and started moving sand out of there, this one curve, the sharpest curve, which is the second one coming in, I almost hit his back tires because he was coming over. And we have that problem, and she'll vouch for it too, even with our residents, they don't want to stay to this side or stay to this side of the road. So that you put construction, it's, you know, it's failure. So are you saying that when they decide to start doing the townhouses, we got to come back and have another meeting? I don't know if y'all know where the townhouses are supposed to be, but they, when they did it, they said they're supposed to be townhouses. According to this, this is the plat that you got, it's already filled with streets and sewer and water lines, townhouses are supposed to be going in here, close to Wilderness Way. So, you know, I, you know, I don't see why we got to have so many different plans.
Thank you, ma'am.
Close this, ma'am.
Thank you, Liz. Mr. Peters, or Mr. Paradise, actually, who owns Collins Road?
I believe Collins Road is a mixture of private easements and prescriptive right-of-way.
In the city proper or county?
Probably both.
Both. What more can we do to prevent the traffic situation and the further rutting of that road by heavy equipment and trucks and so forth? What can we do?
The only thing we can do is to look at it from a code-compliance standpoint and, you know, handle it that way, which is just implementing the city's established policy.
Do we have any large, any of our public works signs out there that say, not a through street, or something like that, that we can put up for them?
Madam Mayor, we can make some signs that will relay that information. I would like to add to Mr. Paradise's comment with regard to code compliance, because of the nature of the road, it's more a private road, I'm not sure that the city has any ability to enforce matters regarding private roads. However, we can provide signs to discourage the use of it for construction purposes. The best thing that can happen would be to get a new road built as quickly as possible so that that road is available for the construction equipment.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I guess part of me says, wait a minute, whose responsibility is it to notify their crews where they're supposed to, thank you.
Me.
Thank you.
That's me.
I was going to say that. So we're going to spend money and have our staff work on something that, and I'm not trying to be mean here, but you need to notify your developers, your labors, your subs, it's their responsibility to say, hey, this is your thoroughfare, this is where you drive, this is what you're allowed to do and what you're not allowed to do, and I don't think it's the city's responsibility to do that. Yeah, we need to hold them accountable and have code out there going, hey, and, but they need to be reaching out to these guys going, control your subs. That's just my personal opinion.
I couldn't agree with you more. It's our responsibility. We had some compliance issues with our contractor early on in the, in the development. I'm not sure if, I think it was mentioned once or twice, this, when we acquired the property, it was, it was a pasture, it was cleared already, there was a few really nice historic trees that we were able to, to save and incorporate that into our design. But, you know, all the clearing had been done when we used Brockman as our site development contractor. We tried to make it clear in the beginning of the, in the beginning of the project that they were not to use Collins under any circumstances. There was a few times where, you know, the word doesn't get out to all their crews and mistakes were made, and we made some corrective actions because of that. If that ever happens again, I'll be happy to give out my tel, my personal telephone number. Anyone here concerned can give me a call directly, and I will deal with it very quickly. The one, one issue that we do have that we don't have control over is, someone mentioned the cell tower. American Tower controls the cell tower, they own that, and they own a prescriptive right-of-way by, not prescriptive right-of-way, it's a, it's a, sorry, an easement over the property, over our property as well. So they have legal right to access that, through that gate on Collins Road. We don't have control over, we can't tell them that they can't use it, we can only ask that they use our entrance instead, but we have really no legal right to, to demand that of them, so.
You good?
Well, so I guess my response to that, then can our staff reach out to American Cell Tower and make sure that they're reaching out to their subs? And same thing, you know, where are they allowed, where are they not allowed? You know, obviously, I don't want this to become something where we have a resident or citizen, you know, injured. So, I don't know, Mr. Peters, is that something that we can have staff reach out to American Cell Tower and see if we can work on the traffic, where they're parking and driving and?
We can certainly send an advisory letter to the cell company.
Thank you.
Making them aware of the, the public desire for this thing to be handled in a manner similar to where he just outlined, so that, you know, we minimize the amount of traffic on that road.
Sounds good. Then I think we've addressed it. If we have the Lennar and we have cell tower addressed, then hopefully that works. If not, write letters to the commissioners at deltonafl.gov and let us know that you're still having a problem, we'll forward it to the city manager, and we'll get it addressed.
Commissioner King, and then I have a question about the buffers.
Sure, you might have to get up one more time. We're hearing this evening that some of the residents out there who are very familiar with the property that, that you're developing, that there are natural buffers out there already. Have you considered keeping those natural buffers? Are you going to keep them? Are you planning on removing them and, and starting at, at land zero level to build up?
Well, the item that's in front of the board, or the commission tonight, is Phase, what's called Phase Two. Phase One is the, is the, the townhomes that are in the future, and Phase Three is to the west of this parcel. So Phase Two, every, almost all the improvements, other than the landscaping and a few other items, some lighting, all the improvements are complete. So all the buffers, all the trees that are there now will remain. So nothing will be touched in Phase Two, and that's what, that's what we're addressing tonight. Phase Three, we're, we're still going through some permitting process, and so that'll be, we'll deal with that at another time, but we're not, you know...
Okay, so I have a...
And this is, this is the...
I'd like to have some clarification, if I can, from the residents that live out there, are we talking about the same piece of property? Or not?
I don't think so either, because I'm looking at the map here, and the parcel that is in front of us on our map with the road that goes in, and, and the marked-off portion has a, a buffer of trees in the one corner of the, of the square. That land already on this, on this visual map is clear. And then there's another parcel, as I'm looking at it to the right of that, that's already, a rectangular parcel that's already cleared as well.
That's Phase One, yes. That's the future townhomes.
Okay, that's already cleared.
That's already cleared, that was cleared when we acquired the property.
And then the, the larger parcel, that's already cleared here as well.
Right. That's, that's what we're, that's what's in front of you tonight, and I mean, Mr. Paradise can probably explain the, the procedure.
Mr.?
About the parcel between Riggs Road and Lake Butler, and Lake Butler.
Mr. Paradise, can you help clarify that, please, to make sure that everyone underst... Commissioner King, are you okay with that? To get some clarification?
No, I'm still confused, I don't know.
No, that's what we're trying to see.
Yes, yes.
Asking to get the clarification because...
No, I want clarification.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and just kind of give an overview of the entire property. This site's in excess of 100 acres. The majority of it has been used and converted to pasture. There is a certain portion of it in the extreme western section that is forested, okay? And that's, and that was part of the Vinland Reserve R-P-U-D as well, okay? That's kind of the 30,000-foot view as far as the character of this property. So that's, that's kind of where we are. Now, you know, there's certain phase, it's kind of strange, you know, they start with Phase Two being the first phase for a final plat, but the first phase is a, I want to say a 30-acre area, don't hold me to that, though, that was for townhomes, and I'm operating off memory here. And then there's Phase Three, which is the bulk of the property, then Phase Two, which is, which is kind of centrally located and involves the corridor. I don't think Phase Two involves any of that forested area that's located in the extreme western side of the property.
Ron, we're going to try to see if they can get a map up there.
Okay.
Because I want to clear up this confusion. This is way too confusing. They can get an aerial view, or at least the location map here, an aerial would be better, if they can get something like that up. Because what I have here, this fits with this. Yeah, yeah, hold on a minute, we'll see what they can do. We might pause this one and move on to the... Lee, is that possible? Do you want, do you want to take a quick, a five-minute break?
About two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, and if we can't, then I'm going to ask that we pause this and try to get an aerial up there, or some, some picture to clear up the confusion. Because I'm not comfortable having this voted on without clarification.
Despite some technical difficulties, we couldn't, we couldn't conjure up an aerial photo right now, but I think, you know, I'll try and narrate where we are in the world here. What you see is the crosshatch area of Phase Two, okay? To the north is the Collins Road corridor. To the south in that skinny piece that comes down, that is the access point from Doyle Road. To the east, where it says Wilderness Way, that's off-site, that's not part of this property. If you notice that there is a small square in the southwestern portion, that's an acre area, that is the cell tower site.
Okay.
Okay? Everything on Vinland...
You're talking right, you're talking right above location map?
Yes, right above location map, there's a small square there.
Okay.
That, that is the cell tower site. And basically, everything on Vinland's property located westward of that cell tower site is forested. And everything eastward of the cell tower site, including what you see here in Phase Two, is basically remnant pasture. Hopefully, that clarifies, you know, where we are and the character of this property.
Are we not talking about the part that side of the cell tower? That's, she got the letter on, she got the letter, and there's markings on that far side of the cell tower, and that's what we're talking about. Because that's what we were told in her letter, it's going to be starting to be developed. Not the part that's shaded, the shaded part is the hatched part.
The shaded part is already developed.
Right, and it's hatched.
That's the final plat for tonight.
That is for the final plat tonight, yes, ma'am.
Yes, the shaded part, to approve the final plat for the...
The letter, start, her letter.
Does she have the letter here?
No, she didn't print it in the house.
The city? City sent the letter, correct?
Yes.
It implemented that it was, it was directly from... Directly from her house.
So, if you can see...
Are you, you're by the cell tower, then?
No.
No.
She, she is right, push the hand up a little bit, she's right back, this apartment, right there between those two is her.
Okay.
That piece right there is her.
So...
Are you clear?
We, we...
No.
This meeting deals with the hatched area.
The hatched area, the letter she got, says the meeting tonight was in reference to the part that's not hatched.
I think that was incorrect. That, this portion here, here's your cell tower.
Yep.
This portion here is Phase Three, that will be under construction in the next coming weeks and months, but it's not part of the meeting tonight. I'm not sure why you got that tonight.
Okay, it's Phase Three.
But it's already, it's approved.
Phase Three is the one with the natural buffer, should be one of those.
Okay. So Phase Three is the one with the natural buffer.
Right. I don't have that plan with us tonight, but it is, that plan is approved, but tonight will be Phase Two, just to subdivide the land.
Okay. Okay, so let's clarify everything. Commissioner King? You good?
Yeah. The shaded area, the hash, that's what we're talking about tonight. That is already cleared and ready to go. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, all the improvements are complete, other than some landscaping.
Okay.
And tonight, and Mr. Paradise can probably explain it a little better, tonight we're voting on, or you're voting on whether to subdivide the land in the final plat. So it's more property, not necessarily design and development.
I understand that part. Okay. Phase Three, that area to the left of the hashed, shaded area, yep, that, that's Phase Three. That's where the natural buffer is.
Yes.
Okay. We're not doing, we're not talking about that tonight.
No.
Okay. Are we good with that? Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And we know now that the cell tower is right there.
Yeah.
Now, okay, I'm clear, but I would like to say one thing. That cell tower, I used to work for Florida Power and Light, so I'm familiar with Collins Road and all that area out there and the substation, so I'm pretty much familiar with that. Collins Road looks like it's an awful long ways away from that cell tower.
It is. Yes, sir.
So if people are coming in from Collins Road to do work for you, you need to stop it. And I can see where y'all would be, have an issue, residents have an issue out there if they don't know if it's a cell tower crew or a construction crew. I can see where that is an issue. And I hope that we can take care of that with the letters that our acting city manager has said that he will get sent out to the cell tower company. So as far as, I'm good with what we're doing so far. If anybody, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not in charge here, so does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Well, I think that the vice mayor and myself both have a question regarding, regarding process. Vice mayor?
Yeah, I do, I totally do. And I need legal on this one. I am concerned, the legality of, we have posting requirements and letter requirements to send information out, and what happens if the information that was sent out is incorrect?
Does anyone have a copy of that email, Joyce?
What does that do to anything we do tonight?
Or that was it sent out in an email form as well?
I have a picture of it on my phone. I could email it to somebody.
Email it to the clerk, please. Joyce, you can access that if she emails it to you.
I believe Lady in the back has a copy of it.
Do you have a letter? You have the letter?
Yeah, that's going to be the same letter.
Can you please bring it forward and give it to the clerk or Mr. Paradise?
I'm with her. This was supposed to be signed for, and it wasn't. Hard to pay it off.
Well, I guess my concern is, you know, we have a responsibility to notify individuals and posting requirements prior to this meeting. And if the letter is incorrect, what does that do to...
We're going to take a five-minute recess to let legal look at this right now. Mr. Paradise, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Five-minute recess, please.
Park upgrades, like upgrades to Thornby Park. Social service funding, drainage, public works projects, and administration. Also included in this is a discussion about the expenditures of CARE Act's funding. City staff recommends the city approve the CAPER and direct the city manager to transmit the CAPER to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. I'd be happy to field any questions you all may have with regard to this.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Paradise? Seeing no questions, is there anyone that signed up for public comment for this item?
No, ma'am.
And we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Commissioner Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hereby move to approve the program year 2020-2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report CAPER and direct the acting city manager to transmit the report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The acting city manager has the authority to make corrections and scribblers errors and the likes.
Second.
Okay, who did that?
All of us.
I heard.
We'll give, I heard Commissioner King. Okay, properly moved by Commissioner Ramos, seconded by Commissioner King. Commissioner McCool.
Yeah, just a short comment. I would like to thank you guys for working so hard over the last year with all of these issues. Ron, Angela is a rock star, and so is everyone in that department. So, thank you very much for y'all completing this, getting it done, having your hands full for the last couple of years. So, y'all have done a good job on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Community development has done an excellent job on this. There's no doubt about it. Angela and her people are just top-notch.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we have gone through public comment. May we vote, please? Motion passes seven to zero. Item seven, old business. We have none. Item eight is new business. Before we carry on, yes.
Madam Mayor, if I could jump in. I made an error earlier because of the way the agenda printed.
It's M. That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. It should be eight M we're pulling, not eight L. But M was not labeled, and that's why I missed it earlier.
Exactly, and that is, that is why I went ahead and stopped this, because we want to just be clear for the record. We are pulling item B and item M. On your paper agenda, there is nothing in front of M. So, we're good, right?
Yes.
Okay, new business. A, selection of vice mayor.
I don't have a button to make a motion.
Commissioner Ramos is on the board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I don't even have one. I don't even have a button.
Ma'am, why don't, why don't we have the thing to make a motion? Oh, it just popped up.
I don't know, Commissioner Ramos was, he was up.
No, mine wasn't there. It just came up.
I don't know, it had a speaker list.
I don't have a button either.
Okay. It just came up.
Do you have a button?
No.
Will you check hers, please, before we move on?
Oh, no, it just popped up.
Is there a delay on these tonight? Okay. Everybody, everybody else have a button? Commissioner Sosa, Commissioner Avila Vasquez, Commissioner King, you got a button? Okay, Commissioner Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Where are we? Oh, selection of vice mayor, sorry.
Am I on?
Yes, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to select our Commissioner Avila Vasquez as vice mayor for the next year.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to select Commissioner Avila Vasquez as vice mayor for next year. No comments. Does everyone have a vote button? Or is we, are we glitched again?
It won't.
What is going on?
We have to do voice votes.
Another one? Thank you. Everyone's tonight. Are we good? Okay, the motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, ma'am. It's your fourth year on here, correct? Okay, we'll turn that over at the next meeting. That's correct procedure, right, Joyce? Okay, item B, contract authorizing, this is the one we're pulling. Item B, the contract. Mr. Peters, are you bringing this back at a later date?
That is correct, ma'am. We'll probably bring it back in January.
Okay, item C, request for approval of resolution number 2021-63 to maintain a general fund economic emergency reserve for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and provide for the reserve every year thereafter. Is this you, Mr. Peters, or Mary?
I will handle this one. As you all recall during the budget process, we had quite a bit of discussion about, for lack of a better word, having a rainy day fund, because back in 2007, 2008, when we had the recession, there was a significant drop in Avalon taxes. I remember Camille Hooper telling me that the, the amount of revenue during that period that we lost was approximately $12 million. So, during the budget process, I had said to the commission that I felt like that $12 million of the undesignated reserves should be set aside into a fund to be able to absorb another recession. And the finance department came up with the appropriate terminology, which is, it's part of this action that meets all the requirements from an accounting standpoint. This is set inside that money to, like I said, to absorb another recession. So, we're recommending that the commission approve this item.
Thank you, sir. Vice mayor.
John, I want to thank you for that. I think that is a great idea. You know, we, we don't ever want to have to go through it, but, you know, I think it is unedible. I guess my question is, I didn't see anything about any reserve funds able to be taken over now, maybe from any prior budget year. I believe we, we may have put it all into the, used them all up and rolled them over, I'm guessing, from last year's. When we shut up, right? Is there any funds left over from the last budget cycle? I mean, we just ended it totally, right? Or we're just starting a brand-new budget, correct? Is there any funds left over from last year's budget at all to start this fund with?
Yes, ma'am. I believe when we were doing the budget, we had about $26 million in undesignated reserves. My understanding is that there was approximately four to six million left over from last year. Part of that money went toward the pay increases for the employees, so there was still another, roughly $2 million, so that would have made it a total of about $28 million. We have set aside a certain amount of money for Rhode Island. Part of it coming from transportation, and part of it from undesignated reserves, believe five million. So, the next $12 million would be 17, so we still have approximately eight to nine million dollars in undesignated reserves right now, after this action.
Thank you.
I guess, I thought we had, when I was looking at the budget, we had about $24 million in undesignated reserves. My question was, we're gonna take 12, 12 million out of the undesignated reserves and put it into this emergency reserve fund? So, that leaves 12 million, correct? And then we had about $2 million swept from fiscal year '21 to '22. So, that'll be about 14 million, minus the $10 million that you took out from the Rhode Island, would leave about, what, $4 million in undesignated reserves?
Mary, I'm gonna have to ask your help here. My recollection, it was $26 million in undesignated reserve, $5 million was going toward Rhode Island, $5 million was coming from the transportation fund, but a total of 10 on Rhode Island. $5 million from '26 to $21 million. Then we had this 12 million here tonight, which would leave a total of $9 million roughly in undesignated reserves.
Okay, I thought in the budget, it said it was gonna pull $10 million and designate it towards the Rhode Island.
Pardon me?
I, I thought in the budget process, it said it was taking $10 million out of undesignated reserves and allocating it for the Rhode Island extension.
Somebody's trying to work on the undesignated reserves. But, microphone, please?
Do you have a mic back there?
It's five and five. Wasn't it five and five? Well, that's the 10. Yeah, that's the 10 he's talking about.
I can't answer your question. Yes, there was the $10 million that was transferred from the general fund.
Doesn't sound...
Yes, it's on.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, there was $10 million that was transferred from the general fund. Part of that was for the different projects. Some of it was for the Rhode Island. It also went to parks projects, municipal capital projects also. In the budget, we had estimated that the fund balance at the end of September 22, this is projected, would be about $36 million. But part of that is assigned to different, for different purposes. So, like, $8 million goes for, approximately $8 million was natural disaster. We always keep a two-month operating reserve. There's also different funds that we set aside, economic development, grant match, and also for capital projects. So, in addition to that, what's new this year is that $12 million will be for an economic, financial economic downturn. So, it's just another way of taking that fund balance and reserving it for that purpose. It can only be used for that purpose and will be by commission direction. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Ramos? So, I'm sorry.
Well, so, so basically, if I understand correctly, we now have $4 million in undesignated reserves. If you take the $2 million that's left over, what you subtracted out, and add the $2 million that was swept over, that would leave $4 million in undesignated reserves, correct?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, I have to actually look at the numbers. I'm not gonna say, yes, that's correct, because I can't, I'm not exactly sure what your thinking is.
Okay, because in the budget, I could've sworn we had $24 million in undesignated reserves, took $10 million out, that left 14 million, took $10 million that was supposed to go to the Rhode Island extension, left 14 million. Now, you're transferring $12 million out to the emergency fund. That leaves $2 million. You got $2 million that was swept from '21 to '22. That would be $4 million. Is that correct?
But the thing is, well, the one thing that I don't think that you're considering is, we have to do a final analysis, how much revenue we actually received, because it was projected. We compare that with the actual funds that were expended, and there's going to be funds that are rolled into that. So, and that's, we are still working on the final, closing out the year. That actually is, the CAPER is not really available until March 31st. Those are audited financial statements. That will give you the absolute final number. We're still working the final closeout, as is September 30th.
Commissioner Sosa, is your concern that we don't have enough in undesignated reserves?
Well, yes, you know, that, that would be my thing. I think it's great, I'm all about reserves. I believe in a strong reserve. But I want to make sure we don't take too much of our reserves and put them into one, one basket unless we have enough that is undesignated as well.
That's where I figured you were going with that.
I, I mean, I don't, I'm all about reserves. Trust me, I, I believe we should have a strong reserve. However, you know, if, if we're, if we're down to, you know, if $2 million is projected, let's say $2 million is swept over from '21 to '22, that would only leave us about $4 million when we take $12 million out. So, you know, that, that's where I have the issue. I don't know, maybe there's a way we could put this on a sliding scale to move X amount now, and then as we get into March, maybe move another portion in. I, I, I think that would be, you know, the, the more prudent thing to do.
Mr. Peters, what's your comment on that?
Move it back.
Madam Mayor, I think what we need to do is, is table this item until the next meeting. Let me get with the finance department and get specific numbers so that we can be totally accurate, because it was my understanding that the Rhode Island money was coming from two pots of money, and I think that's the confusion.
That is correct.
So, let us pull this back, table it tonight, bring it back to you on January 3rd with very specific numbers.
Commissioner Sosa, would you like to make that motion to table? Are you, does that, does that make you more comfortable? I mean, it does me, because I agree with you.
I think having the full figures would definitely make me more comfortable.
I, I agree with you. I, I am 100%. I want to see exactly where we are.
I mean, I like the concept. I totally agree with it, but I, I just want to make sure the numbers are in the right place.
Commissioner, Commissioner King?
I move to table agenda item C until our January meeting. Second.
Okay, motion to table by Commissioner Sosa, seconded by Vice Mayor Bradford. So, the motion to table has been made. We need now a vote on whether we're gonna go through and table this. I know that's an extra process, but the motion to table is correct, right? Now, we need to, we need to vote on the motion to table, and then we need to vote on the tabling, correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay, let's vote on the motion to table. And that motion to table passes seven to zero, and now we need to have another vote for the actual tabling, correct, sir?
Well, actually, the motion to table, when you approved it, was the tabling.
Okay, so, we're good now. We don't need another one.
You're not.
Okay, perfect. So, Mr. Peters, do you have your direction to go ahead and bring this forth when the proper numbers are available, hopefully?
Just to clarify, the motion was to table till January 3rd.
Right.
Okay, next item, item D, request for approval of an indemnity agreement to assign two new indemnities to serve as agents for the city of Deltona for the 401A and the 457B deferred compensation plans. Mari?
It's me, Mary.
Mary.
This is just to add two more members to our committee. NFP is a consultant, and they advise us on the 457 and the 401A plans. We needed to add two more members. One, Rebecca Wilk, so we have a representative from HR, and also in an effort to make it more employees are part of it, we have Bobby Badaford, who was suggested from the Public Works Department.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Any questions on this, commissioners? Let's see, Vice Mayor. Sure, go ahead. You're the only one up.
I was just gonna make a motion, ma'am.
Yes, go ahead, and there's no one else on the board.
I move to approve, approve the indemnity agreement to assign two new members to serve on the deferred compensation working group as presented. The acting city manager has the authority to make corrections, of scribner errors, and the like.
Second. Okay, properly moved by Vice Mayor Bradford, and seconded by Commissioner Ramos. Is there any member from the public that wanted to speak on this?
No, ma'am.
Then we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. We don't have any resolutions or ordinances to read, so may we vote, please? Motion passes seven to zero. Item E, request for final approval to purchase a replacement fire engine with the approved budget funds. Chief Snyder is not here. Chief Swisher? And Mr. Peters, do we have any?
Yes, ma'am, I'll handle this one. This is a budgeted item for the, a new fire truck and the amount of $710,000. We're at a point now that we need to go ahead and get this order in before there's another increase in pricing, so that's why we're bringing it to you this evening.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for either Mr. Peters? Let's see, Commissioner Sosa.
Once this is approved and it's ordered within this fiscal year?
It takes, if I read correctly, about 18 months to get this fire engine?
Yeah, they, they used to take about nine to 11 months, but because of all the supply shortages, everybody's kind of backed up, so about 18 to 20 months.
18, 20 months, right. And if nobody's got any questions, I'll make the motion to approve.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the purchase of the replacement fire engine and essential, essential equipment with the approved budget funds before the end of the calendar year. The acting city manager has the authority to make corrections and scribner errors as and the like.
Second.
Okay, properly moved by Commissioner Sosa, seconded by Commissioner Avila Vasquez. Did you have a question, commissioner, since you're on the board?
No, I just was gonna make a motion.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that signed up to speak on this?
No, ma'am.
Then we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Did you have any comments at all, sir? No good?
No, thank you.
Okay, may we vote, please? Okay, the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Sir, are you staying till, for the rest of the meeting?
Sure.
I just wanted to have you speak on Operation Deltona Cares at the end.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm up here for the next one, too, I think.
Oh, yeah, I think, thanks. Okay. Item G, request to award the training room renovations at Fire Station 61 bid to UDH Contractors LLC. Mr. Peters, are you, or?
Who?
Mayor?
What about F?
Did I forget F?
Yep.
I can wait.
No, we're good. It lit up, and I read, I, I was looking at the other one, I'm sorry. We'll go to, we'll go to F. F is a request for approval of resolution number 2021-65, budget amendments for general stormwater community development block grant, the CDBG, transportation municipal complex water sewer utility equipment replacement park projects and state housing initiatives partnerships, the ship program fund for fiscal year 21, 22. Mary?
These are projects that were unfinished or in process at the end of, at September 30th, 2021, and the projects are rolled over to the next budget year.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions on these? You have a list of everything here. Vice Mayor Bradford.
I move to approve resolution number 2021-65, budget amendment for the general stormwater community development block grant, CDBG, transportation municipal complex water sewer utility equipment replacement park projects and state housing initiatives partnership fund for fiscal year 2021-2022. The acting city manager has the authority to make corrections of scribner errors and the like.
Second.
Okay, properly moved by Vice Mayor Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Sosa. Any members of the public signed up for a comment on this?
Yeah.
And we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. May we vote, please?
Elizabeth, I need your help.
Well, why would you be the exception this evening, sir? We've all been hit.
They have a voice.
Except I think Marissa. Okay, the motion passes seven to zero, so now let's go back on track. So, now we have item G, request to award the training room renovations at Fire Station 61 bid to UDH Contractors LLC. Okay, Chief Swisher, thank you. Come again.
I'm here.
Okay. So, this is to award the bid for the renovation of the training room at 61, correct, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions? The, the bid is $38,115 to award the bid. Let's see, who's here? Commissioner Avila Vasquez.
May I like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to award the training room renovations at Fire Station 61 bid to UDH Contractors LLC in an amount of $38,115. The acting city manager has the authority to correct scribners, errors, and the like.
Second. Motion with, for commissioner, moved by Commissioner Avila Vasquez, seconded by, I'll give it Vice Mayor Bradford. Okay, is there anyone from the general public that signed up for this?
No, ma'am.
Then we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and may we vote, please? And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Next is item H, request approval for purchase of a pavilion and its installation at Veterans Memorial Park. The entire project is not to exceed approved budgeted amount of $80,000. Mr. Reckley, is he right here? Yes.
Madam Mayor.
He's been there. Yes.
This particular item, which originally, as I said, would be two separate pavilions, we have elected to combine them into a single pavilion, similar to the one that's being replaced. So, that is a change from what the budget called out, and we're recommending that we approve this, because the pavilion's in bad shape.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any comments on, on the request for the purchase of the pavilion? No questions?
Can you, I, I'm trying to see.
Commissioner King.
Yeah.
What was it saying? Oh.
I'm over there quite often, but I'm remembering. It's not very messed up. If it's not messed up, do we?
Have to replace it. I believe, Brian Reckley, Parks and Recreation Director, I believe with new specifications and with this new installation, there will be a requirement for new foundation to be laid out for this, this project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hey, Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going over that again. So, in the last budget, you're saying that we had two pavilions that totaled the same amount approved? What were you saying, John? I'm sorry. Mr. Peters? You were saying originally, we had two pavilions approved.
Yes, ma'am. We originally were going to do two separate pavilions, half the size of each. But in talking to the, the veterans at the, out there, there's a bigger need for a larger pavilion for the groups and all that than having two smaller ones. So, I instructed the Parks and Rec Department to modify the bid process to be one larger pavilion rather than two smaller ones.
Okay, and is this bid amount, right, and is this amount comparable to what the two individuals were?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, had we done them two separate, they would be the same bid amount?
That's correct.
Just to clarify. Okay, thank you.
It's slight difference, but it's very close to the same amount.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for either Mr. Peters or you, Ryan. Being out there at the Memorial Day event, some of the sidewalks are not in the best of shape and somewhat hazardous. Do we have any plans, since we're redoing this pavilion, to work on those sidewalks at all?
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're...
I'll take it.
Okay.
Mr. Public Works will take it.
Well, let me just say this. You know, we have had some discussions about ADA compliance, and just the same Memorial Day service I was out there, a significant amount of that sidewalk did not meet ADA requirement. In fact, if you go from the building to the, the flags up on top of the hill by the helicopter, I'm not sure there is an ADA compliant route to get there, i.e., 5% grade or 8% on short distances with a handrail. We don't have that. And so, at the next meeting, we're hoping to have a contract with a company that will go through and do an assessment of all of our facilities, come up with a list of items that need to be corrected, and we're gonna focus this coming year on getting our facilities up to a minimum standard. One of the concerns I have, this is the engineer in me talking, is that we have a number of older buildings that have roof structures that I know do not meet the current hurricane requirements. Many of these roof structures are in need of new roofing anyway, but we may... Many of these roof structures are in need of new roofing anyway, but we may be looking at, you know, literally removing the structural component of the roof as well as the shingles and redoing it. So, next meeting, as I said, we're working with the purchasing department. I'm hoping to bring a contract in with, for a company to assist us with that effort, and probably on my list, one of the highest priorities is going to be the sidewalks at the Veterans Park. They're falling apart, they don't meet ADA, and we need to have, at that location of all places, we need to be ADA assessable.
Thank you, sir, because I strongly agree. That is definitely, definitely something we need to address. Commissioner Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve purchase of pavilion and its installation at Veterans Memorial Park in the amount of $35,060 pavilion structure, plus the $37,641 with eight cents installation, total cost of $72,701 with eight cents. The acting city manager has the authority to make corrections and scrivener errors and the like.
Second.
Okay, who got the second on that one? Okay, I have a question on this motion. You have an exact amount of $72,701. Your discussion says not to exceed 80. What do you need the motion for, that exact amount?
The reason we did that is we wanted to set aside approximately 10% for contingencies in case something comes up while we're out there. For instance, the foundation needs to be strengthened or something in that nature inherently. Certain commissioner who's in the construction industry would know things come up, and it's better for us to have a 10% contingency so that we can deal with it in the field and not have to come back to the commission.
Do we need to modify the motion then to 80,000?
That would be best.
Commissioner Ramos?
I would withdraw the motion and read, so I'm not sure who seconded the motion, if they want to withdraw.
Commissioner Sosa, are you okay with the withdrawal? And then he re-reads it with the?
Okay. So, I move to, I move to approve the purchase of the pavilion and installation at Veterans Memorial Park. For the entire project is not to exceed an approved budget amount of $80,000. The acting city manager has the authorities to make corrections and scrivener errors and the like.
So, Commissioner Sosa, are you good at seconding that? Second. Okay, so properly moved by Commissioner Ramos, seconded by Commissioner Sosa. Is anyone from the public signed up to speak on this matter?
No, ma'am.
Then we'll close the public portion of, public comment portion of the hearing. May we vote, please? And the motion passes seven to zero. Next item up. I, request approval for purchase of electronic gates at Harris-Saxon Community Center, Lake Butler Skate Park and West Cryle Park, aluminum fencing at Firefighters Memorial Park and Lake Butler Skate Park, and the gates installation. The entire project is not to exceed total approved budgeted amount of $170,000. Any comments, Commissioners? Let's see, Commissioner Sosa?
I have just one question regarding the Lake Butler. For the new fencing, are you replacing the brown wooden fence that's up front? And would the new fencing start from there and run all the way down to the lake?
The, excuse me, it will be replacing the wood fencing. When you say the lake, it'll actually, it'll stop before it actually gets to the lake where we have kind of like that wood buffer. So we won't protrude into the wood buffer or cut down any additional vegetation. So we'll stop kind of there where it currently is, but it is to replace the wood structures that are presently there.
Okay, so, but you're not going to replace any of the fencing around the skate park itself where the skate ramps are, are you?
Right now, we're not. I know we looked at a couple areas where we do have the wood structures within, but we are coming up, we're trying to come up with a different solution of, or maneuvering and walkability and different things through that, through the park itself.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to, I'm curious about the Firefighters Memorial Park. So this is a new gate that you're installing there? Because I don't remember seeing a?
This will be a new gate. Right now, actually, that's for firefighters. We weren't able to do the electronic gate, just due to kind of the different structures there, the different roadways and paths. That's something we have to look in the future, but this is to replace, again, the wood structures with the aluminum gate that's surrounding the park area. So we ran into some hiccups trying to get the electrical gates in that section, so this is not one that will be there for the electrical gate. It will just be the aluminum fencing there.
So the gate is for something going in the future?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Liz, has anyone signed up for a public comment on this?
No, ma'am.
Then we'll close the public comment portion of this hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion and a second, if you so desire, before anyone makes that motion. Mr. Peters, do you need the amount not to, the entire project is not to exceed total approved budgeted amount of $170,000? Do you need that in the motion or not?
170.
170, in the motion. So whoever makes this motion, please make that a part of it. We have Vice Mayor.
I move to approve the new aluminum picket fencing for skate park and electronic gates for skate park, Harris-Saxon Community Center and West Cryle Park, and allocate the cost savings associated with these projects to include and advance a future capital improvement project for aluminum picket fencing at Firefighters Park as part of the capital improvement project budget. Budget for all these are not to exceed 170,000. The acting city manager has the authority to make corrections of scrivener errors and the like.
Second.
Properly moved by Vice Mayor Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ramos, and may we vote, please? Motion passes seven to zero. Item J, request approval for purchase of a Toro Real Master 3100-D Sidewinder with attachments, a Toro Real Master 5510-D with attachments, a Toro Workman HDX2, I'm going to guess WD wheel drive, and a Toro Ground Master 3200-4WD with attachments for parks and recreation. The cost of this purchase shall not exceed the quoted amount of $168,994.07. Okay, Mr. Reckley, any comments, Commissioners? Any questions, comments for Ryan or Mr. Peters? Seeing no one light up, do we have any member of the public that wanted to speak on this?
No, ma'am.
And we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Vice Mayor Bradford?
I move to approve the authorization to purchase a Toro Real Master 5510-D with attachments, a Toro Workman HDX2WD, and a Toro Grounds Master 3200-4WD with attachments in the total amount of $168,994.07. The acting city manager has the authority to make corrections of scrivener errors and the like.
Second. I'll second that. And so we have a motion and a second. Gone through the public comment, may we vote, please? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, item K.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Thank you, sir. Request emergency purchase pursuant to section 4.09 of the city's purchasing policy due to a timing emergency as explained herein below, the purchase order with John M. Hall Co. to construct a forced main relocation from Doyle Road to the first manhole being installed in Summer Breeze Street in Cortland Park Phase II, based upon an emergency authorization provided by the acting city manager in the amount of $49,970.51. I don't see Mr. Danskin here, so Mr. Peters?
This item and the next item are two areas where I declared an emergency. We were in a situation in the middle of construction that if we had stopped to wait for commission approval, we would have been either facing a future cost increase on this particular one to go back after the fact and correct the sewer connection. So I elected to declare an emergency so that the contractor could proceed with the work, and then, you know, come to commission for the final approval, come out already owing for 25,000. So this is a situation where by modifying the connection point for the sanitary sewer, it will provide better overall system reliability and coverage for the future, and then require digging up new construction in order to correct it after the fact.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if there's any questions. I was just ready to make a motion. I move to approve the emergency purchase order with the John M. Hall Company to construct a forced main relocation from Doyle Road to the first manhole being installed in Summer Breeze Street in Cortland Park Phase II, based upon an emergency provided by the acting city manager in the amount of $49,970.51. The acting city manager has the authority to make corrections of scrivener errors and the like.
Second.
Okay, properly moved by Commissioner Ramos, seconded by Vice Mayor Bradford. Is there any member of the public that wanted to speak on this?
No, ma'am.
We'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and may we vote, please? Motion passes seven to zero, and now we'll move to item L, request for approval of change order number two for the LCAM paved shoulders segment one project in the amount of $102,014.52 for extra structural work within the travel lanes. Mr. Peters?
Yes, ma'am. Once again, I declared an emergency in this situation. When the consultant did the design work, they did one core sample in the entire road segment. The core sample indicated that there was more than adequate pavement material to basically scarf out the material, reheat it, and then put it back down. However, when we went to mill the road, we found 10 locations where the thickness of the pavement and the adequacy of the base was lacking. So, rather than shut the project down and have to remobilize at an additional cost, I declared an emergency to get the work moving along. The unfortunate thing with this is the added cost is not being covered by our JPA agreement with the DOT. We are utilizing money from our road paving account to make up the difference, but for any of you all who have been out there recently driving LCAM, it is a very nice ride, and I'm glad we went ahead and proceeded and get this work done.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioners, let's see, Commissioner Sosa?
When is the ETA for completion from that section, from Normandy to Fort Smith? When do you anticipate having the work done, completed?
Can you ask that again, sir?
What is your targeted date for the full completion of the road from Normandy to Fort Smith?
It is getting very close, sir. I don't have a specific date. I know they are working on the ditch line area on the south side of the road. Most of the work on the north side is complete. They're very close to being complete. It's just the distance where work that needs to be done on the south side at this point.
Okay, and on the, you took the money out of the road paving account. How many roads are slated for 2022 to be resurfaced? And do you have a list of those roads? I had a resident ask me, and I'm not sure which roads are being resurfaced this year, and if you could provide us with a list, that would be great.
And you really expected me to have that answer?
Well, if you could provide it within the?
What I would do is tomorrow, I would get with our public work staff. We have done the grading of the road. We have the list to be paved. I will get that list, and I will send it out to the commissioners, and I will have our public information people post it on the website so that it's about to be put out.
Okay. One other question. On Normandy, between Saxon and Providence, how much of that is county? Is all of Normandy county? Because I, in my personal opinion, all the driving I do around Deltona, that has got to be the worst section of road in Deltona that I have driven on. Do you, do we know if that's county road, or is that within the city limits where we can repave that? Or do we need to reach out to the county?
Can you ask me once again what segment you're talking about?
If we're going down Normandy, right when you cross over Fort Smith, right, there's a section of it that's pretty decent, and then it gets really rough. It's a patch job all the way up and down, almost to Providence. The section in between there, I don't have the actual cross streets, but do we know that's county, or is that that part that's not done? Is that going to be city? I mean, who do we need to reach out to to get that fixed if it's not city?
That's Normandy, right?
Sir, that is a?
East Normandy from Fort Smith to Providence.
That is, that is city control.
Yep.
The problem we have is we have an extremely difficult drainage situation there. We have a very high groundwater table. We are experiencing base failure in the worst way possible. We are racking our brains to come up with a solution that, where we can replace it short of literally building a pre-cast road section and putting it down. And so we have been working mightily for about the last year, trying to come up with a solution, because the stormwater right now in that area, there's no place to put it. And so it is, I agree with you, the road is atrocious, and it is, we are working diligently to come up with a solution. We have engaged, we originally were engaging our road consultant, and we're now engaging our stormwater consultant, because they're probably better able to solve this than a roadway consultant.
All right, thank you.
That's in the area of Gold Coast and that whole, it's bad. Yeah, it's very, very bad. Commissioner King?
You obviously have not ridden down Lake Helenostine Road lately. I'm convinced it's the worst road in our city, and it's not controlled by us. It's county. I do have a question, though, Mr. Peters. We're going to back up to LCAM. When you say that there is a section of the road that is inadequate, it's inadequate because the original construction was not, was poor? Or is there some other reason? And the reason I'm asking that question is because in my, in my working days, if my company sent me out to fix a job that somebody, other, some other contractor had done, they backbilled, my company backbilled to the original company that did the inadequate work. And I'm wondering, if that's the case, isn't there some way for us to do that as well?
Our only claim would be against the original engineer of record, because they did one core sample, and they did the entire design based on a single core sample. The problem is the city approved that GOFA services. It predated my time here. I would like to think that I would have asked for more core samples. But to your original question, it appears that during the original construction of LCAM, and I mean the original construction, that they literally put the asphalt right on top of the dirt without even the benefit of a stone base. There is literally no stone under these places that we dug up. So that's why we had to take the corrective action. If we hadn't, what would literally have happened if we would have spent the money to fix these roads, in about five to 10 years from now, it would be falling apart, much like what we're talking about over on Normandy and Fort Smith area. So that's why we made a tough decision to go ahead, do the necessary repairs, and pave it properly. We have been in discussions about what alternative we have against the original consultant, but I'm not very, I'm not very optimistic about our opportunity to go back on them. However, we have had some discussion internally about not having them do design work in the city anymore.
And so, I guess then, my next question, you just, might have just answered it. So we do have a process in place that we can use if we find that a contractor has done inadequate work, and we call somebody else out, or we have to pay money to get it fixed. We do have a process in place?
Yes, sir, we have a?
To backfill that first company.
We have a? We have a bonding process at the end of the project to ensure for a certain period of time as to the quality of their work. And we have gone back on some of those bonds in the past to get the corrective action done after the back.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCool.
Yeah, to that point, I was going to ask if we currently have anybody that we have gone back after. Or do we have anything in process right now where we have gone back after a contractor? Because I'm looking around, I'm going to mention one, going down Ninth Street, right off Alexander that we talked about. The house was abandoned, and they left, like, if you went off the hole that they left in the road, you would have seriously jacked up your vehicle. Now, the city's gone out there and put cones, but have we gone after them for that? I mean, do we have adequate support? Because we have a lot of those situations. We have a situation out at Lake Baton. We have other infill situations on houses where stuff has been done. So do we have, I guess, active situations going on right now? Mr. Peters?
Madam Commissioner, I would tell you that in the last year, our protocol has changed tremendously. And I'm going to brag on the Building Department right now. As you all know, a year ago, we were using Universal Engineering to assist us with our building inspection. We were receiving a number of complaints. Universal was very expensive on a per-hour basis. I will be sharing with you all a couple of reports that I've gotten for the last couple of months showing the revenue stream from the Building Department, and you will be pleasantly surprised. But under the leadership of Carl Lynch and John Bowden, they changed the process to where many of you all sending complaints to me in my office regarding porta-potties that aren't secure and damaged pavement and damaged sidewalks. And I can honestly say, unlike the past, we are getting corrective action done. It's part of the permit process. We don't issue a CO until corrective actions are taken. So I'm very proud of what we're doing in terms of holding contractors and others accountable for their actions. And I think a debt of gratitude goes to our building staff, our community development staff, and our public work staff for doing an outstanding job looking out for the public interest in that regard.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, commissioners? Or anyone signed up for the public comment?
Mayor.
Then we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. We need a motion and a second, if you're so inclined, commissioners. Vice Mayor?
I'm going to find the motion again, ma'am.
It's okay.
I just flipped over the accent.
I move to approve change order number two for the El Cam paved shoulders segment one project in the amount of one-hundred two thousand and fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents for extra structural work within the travel lanes. The acting city manager has authority to make corrections, scrutiny errors, and the like.
Second. It's properly moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by myself. May we vote, please? Motion passes seven to zero, and this, ladies and gentlemen, is why we have reserves. This is why we have reserves for things like this. Okay, item M. Next on our list is item M, and that has been requested to be pulled by the city manager. We're going through a parks study right now, so I think at some point after you get that in, correct, the feasibility study for park and rec, you'll bring this back and address it at some point. So then we'll move on to item nine, public forum. Would you please read who's here for the public forum?
Deborah Cruz and then Billy Futter. Deborah Cruz, please.
Hi, good evening. We're here to discuss the fence ordinance as it pertains to lakefront properties. By definition, a fence is a method to establish property boundaries and to provide security and privacy. We have erected a six-foot privacy fence on one side of our property. It provides security and privacy for our sheds and boats. And due to the fact that we are in a cul-de-sac and we are not lined side by side, we are more in a fan type of formation. We are not blocking, the fence is not blocking any lakefront views from any other property. Also, we are not the only house in this area on Lake Teresa that has erected a privacy fence. There are other people as well who have done this. So thus, we have basically, we're here to have the twenty-five percent opacity ordinance due to this, the reasons mentioned above, to have this, to not abide? To not abide by the twenty-five percent opacity.
So technically, we're not going to talk back, but I am going to ask you if you could provide your information to the clerk's office with your address and where the parcel's located, obviously, and if you have gone through the process of a permit...
Yes.
...and have been denied, or have you been approved for?
We have been approved for it.
We have a permit, but we haven't called for final inspection because we found now that that's an issue. We didn't think it was an issue because there's so many houses. It's Lake Teresa, and there's so many houses that have privacy fence. I understand on a straight line because it could block some view.
Right.
But we're in a cul-de-sac, properties like this, none of our neighbors have an issue with it. But we understand now that that's going to be an issue when I call for final inspection. And we're just wondering if we can get any guidance from you, what we can do, because we really want the privacy fence there. It's in a cul-de-sac, it's a dark area, and I have boat shed, and we just wanted privacy kids.
So, Mr. Peters, they can leave their information with the clerk, and how would you like to address this situation?
If they would provide the information to the clerk's office, we will follow up on it starting tomorrow and see what kind of solution is available in this situation.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work, too.
You're very welcome. And to make sure we get some answers for them. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Billy Futter, please.
No. Billy Futter?
Who are you calling?
It looks like Billy Futter? Futter?
Billy Fowler. Hello, y'all.
Oh, Fowler. That could be it. Apologize.
My name is Billy Fowler. I'm not able to speak on what I want to speak on. I have a call, I couldn't get the information. But what I've got is talking about falling back on a contractor for liability, okay? There were two houses built down from me that raised and covered up the swell that Carl watered the back up on to me. The city manager there, I spoke to him, he went and looked at it, he said he had to hire an engineer. So he hired the engineer, went out there and stuff, and I knew that what had to be done because I'm a forty-four-year retired contractor out of South Carolina. So I'd like to know how I get what it costs for him to hire that engineer to come out there and then come back and say that he going to do it his way. But his way ain't working. Now, what I'm asking for is them two houses that was built, either tear that driveway and everything back out, he got to boil up under it, to put tiles, to cover it the way he got to put, and carry the water like it's supposed to go. Because in public work, they say if you damage property on the right of way, you got to put it back like it was or better. Am I correct? So what he done, he got one little section there that he dug out, that now it doesn't settle down six or eight inches lower than what it was to start off with, that he would not go out there and correct it. The reason he didn't go with that engineer, because I knew what it was going to be a tremendous price, should never had a CO issued on them two houses. Now, a sidewalk there that both ends, you walk out, you got that much of a drop, no kind of signs, sidewalks cracked and everything, and they got a CO on it. So we need some roads paved around the area I live in. I follow counsel in South Carolina pretty good. The money that y'all, if your shoe fits your foot, wear it now. If y'all let this go by much longer, that it should have been repaired years back, y'all don't care a damn thing about, you know, the old parts. You just think about all this new parts. You need to forget about some of these new stuff and get your other stuff up to par and satisfy them. As I understand it, you as the mayor want on common sense. That's a good idea. I'm going to give you an example. If I can have two driveways put on my corner lot, why can't I put both them driveways together instead of having one over there that I wouldn't want to use? But can the order be changed to where if you can qualify for two driveway, can you put two driveways together? Because I had to cut mine back short because I wasn't allowed to do it. Had public works director, I will call her name, Phyllis Wallace, she come out there, said she done all she could about her three-car garage, I could do it. But it didn't have a three-car garage. So am I allowed to put two driveways together? Can the order be changed?
I think if you leave your information with the clerk's office, we should look at that and see if there's a variance that needs to be done for anything like that. I don't know. I don't have the answer right here, but leave all your information with Liz and Joyce.
Well, Mr. Peter knows all about it.
Then maybe Mr. Peters, after, in his manager comments, could expound upon that.
But what's been done now don't need to be known any longer. I know my time is getting up.
Yep, it's done.
But my problem...
Thanks.
...in the area that I live in, something needs to be done.
Thank you.
I'm attached over now on appraisal side, and I asked him...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you.
Any money that's available.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're all done. Your public comments, time is over. Anyone else, Liz?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, comments on consent agenda. And consent agenda, we do not have anything. City commission special reports and requests.
Madam Mayor, can I make a comment on the consent agenda item?
Yes.
Just so you know, going forward, the rules I'm going to be using with regard to what I put on consent agenda are those items that have been budgeted with a dollar value of less than a hundred thousand. Over the last several months, we have been pulling a lot of consent agenda items that we felt would be non-controversial. And I believe that using the rationale that if it is budgeted, it's the same project it was budgeted, and it's under a hundred thousand, that would qualify as a consent agenda item.
Okay.
The only reason I didn't do the pavilion project tonight was because we did change it from two pavilions to one, and I felt like that needed to be explained.
Okay.
But going forward, anything a hundred thousand in the budget will be consent.
Thank you, sir. Okay, city commission special reports and requests. Commissioner Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to bring a report in reference as it relates to the TPO. In our last meeting that we had for the TPO, we had a presentation from District Five Office, and it talked about safety. And I know Commissioner McCool has been working with our Volusia County Sheriff and talked about safety, and I want to make sure that we all get a copy of this PowerPoint, so I'm going to give it to Joyce so that you guys can get it, because I think it's a great opportunity that maybe District Five, at District Five level, they're looking at this. Their focus is on safety. Safety begins with me. Safety begins with you. That's kind of like their campaign. But I think that there are some things here that hit on that, I think, as a city. And maybe, Mr. Peters, we can see on how we can do something in reference to this with the target zero that they have going on in District Five. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Chief Swisher, can you, I just have a, I just wanted to, in the special reports and requests, have you, and I'm not sure if you're the individual to do this, but by default, you're here for the fire department. We've been seeing some things on social media and so forth about Operation Deltona Cares. Can you just let us know how that's going, what you know about that? And it's a great, it's a great project.
Yep, I got some information from Amanda. So Lieutenant Donaldson, the...
Thank you, Carrie. He's doing a great job. Most of it's on his own time. Amanda has been supporting him through the administration side, along with all of us, whenever we can help, wrapping packages, all that kind of stuff. This year, however, we're not wrapping. Yes. But our whole training room, the one that we're going to be redoing, is all full of presence. Unfortunately, not as many presence as we've had in the past. However, we also have not had as many families apply this year. Usually, we have about forty families or so. This year, I think we're doing fifteen.
Wow.
However, if you guys do want to help, there is a family that has approached us, I think, I'm not sure when, but they have nine kids, and they don't have any furniture in their house because they can't afford to have furniture. So we're looking for beds and baby cribs and things like that. So if you want to contact Amanda, that would be awesome. But we do have enough funds at this point to support what we're doing, and the presence will go out on the twenty-first, I believe.
Is there a contact number you'd like to give for anybody that's either watching this online or on TV, if they have anything that they'd like to do for that family?
Yeah, they can call the fire department.
Okay.
Three eight six eight seven eight six nine oh one. And they'll get Christina or Amanda, and they can take their information from them. The Operations Cares, though, the actual presence is closed because we have to close it by a certain point so we can get the presence identified for each family. And they're going to be all situated starting tomorrow, and then they'll be out, I think, on the twenty-first.
Okay, but for the family that just came forward, that's still...
Yes.
...there's still an option to provide?
Yes, there's still a need for them.
If there's furniture?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes.
I appreciate you waiting around to explain that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Commissioner McCool?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of special requests. One is I want, would like for us to, if we could, get an update on the meters, because as of late, I've had a lot of, it comes in cycles, but a lot of comment and a lot of emails and messages to me via social media regarding water bills. And, you know, after working on water issues for as long as I have been working on them, I understand that we have a high percentage where it turns out to be an issue with, you know, residents, whether it be some leaky pipe or, I understand that, I get that. But the fact is, is that we still do have an amount of water bills that are just anomalies. I know no other word in our English language that would be descriptive of that. We just do, we can't tell what the problem is. And we have done really good, the Water Department, Mr. Peters, has done really good discerning that and being forgiving when this happens. However, with that being said, I want an update on the water meters so that we can stop the madness. This is taking up a lot of time on the part of residents and on the part of the Water Department, and getting those meters in expeditiously would help alleviate a lot of that back and forth, right? Because some of it is he said, she said, and you just can't prove it, period. I went through my own personal thing, and I know still to this day, I can't tell you, I didn't have a leak. You know what I'm saying? And listen, to my people that I know are listening, because I said I was going to bring this up, the reason that we say that, it's not cliche, it's true, because eighty percent of things that I have worked on, on behalf of residents, have been due to a leak irrigation or something like that. So I'm telling you the tea on that, people. But the other stuff, we do have other issues that are never explained, and that's what we're working on. So an update on water meters, right? Mr. Peters, whenever you can. So I'm telling you the tea on that, people. But the other stuff, we do have other issues that are never explained, and that's what we're working on. So, an update on water meters, right? Mr. Peters, whenever you can, so that I can report back. Also, special request to the city manager regarding a workshop, and I know that we've talked about this, a workshop with law enforcement to discuss our speeding and safety, because I know someone could not get here tonight, but I know that there is a street, a whole street signing petitions right now on Ferrendina Drive, because the speeds down, today, I was there on that road, and a high-performance car came by doing at least sixty, no lie, you could hear them take the brakes, they went into Lake Baton there, and I routed out who it was and spoke to them about it, but it's an issue. So, the workshop, if we can, I would, we talked about having that in January, if we could please move forward with that. I know that the city manager has some numbers from law enforcement, and I would like between now and then for us to talk about level of service, because I need to understand that completely. I've read what the national reports say of what level of service is, as far as officers to resident ratio on a national average. I've read other municipalities' average. We have, you know, a different average here, and I don't know if that's because of, I don't know why that is, right? And I want to understand that, and our officers do a great job. However, we are still, it's a thing. I know that we've always had speeding, but the reckless driving, and just, it's, it's still, I'm gonna harp on it until we have that. So, if we can push forward to make sure that we have that workshop in January, and discuss that, and get us information regarding what Captain Marino turned over to us regarding that also. I also have a special request for Mr. Paradise, and when we're talking about applying our comprehensive plan to building and development here, portion I would like to understand, and I would like a very succinct answer, who is the person that signs off with the Board of Education when we talk about having enough teachers and facilities? I want to know who that person is. I understand the department, but that's still really ambiguous as to who makes that determination, because I'm gonna tell you right now, with the amount of people that we have moving in, and the amount of teachers quitting, we got a problem, Houston, and we need to talk about it, because it's, the teachers that I have talked to here, the paraprofessionals that I have talked to here, we have, they have a problem. So, we're sticking more kids in, on top of them with these, so I would like to understand that also. I also would like to thank you, Stacy, very much for following up so quickly on the Lake Lorraine cleanup situation, but I would like follow up on that also, to find out, because we have residents out there that are trying to hand clean, because they have mosquito issues out there, because the vegetation has gotten so bad. So, that's my special request, thank you.
Okay, let's go through those requests, Commissioner McCool. The first one is the meters. Mr. Peters, I would assume that you can provide an update to the commission one way or the other, this doesn't require the commission to have consensus for that, that's just a, an update that you can provide for us, correct, sir?
Well, let me start with the transportation, traffic workshop.
Well, let's start with the meters, because I made a list, and she has four requests here, so can we, let's go down the list. The first one, she wants an update on the meters. You can provide that, correct, like-
An update on?
The water meters.
Yep.
So, we can, when those are coming, and how that's all working, correct? That's what you want, Commissioner McCool, correct, the new meters? Okay. Second, we're gonna go, the next one is, the Commissioner McCool is requesting that we have a workshop on speeding and law enforcement and level of service for January. This is, what do we have on the workshop, number one, in January, and number two, we need commission consensus for this type of a workshop?
Right now, I have planned to do a workshop on the parking rec programs in January. The concern I have is, when it comes to speeding, traffic, and that type of thing, that is a profession, people make a profession of this issue. It's very complex. I have talked to several of you all regarding different solutions, and, you know, quite frankly, I need time, my staff need time, to sit down with the Sheriff's Department and look at the various options. For instance, some of the problems that we have in the city are cut-through streets. For instance, if you go on Tibbely between Saxon and Providence, that's a cut-through. People avoiding going up and around, they're going across the triangle, the long axis of the triangle, but it's shorter overall. That's a different problem than people speeding on Providence, because it's a county road, there's not a whole lot of options we have. And so what I would like to do is, if you all would beg, if you would beg my indulgence, give us until about March timeframe, to put together a comprehensive workshop dealing with traffic and speeding and that type of thing. And I think we would be better prepared to answer those concerns. I will say that be careful what you wish for. I remember when I first moved to Florida in nineteen ninety-four, Port Orange had a very aggressive traffic citation program. It was so bad that people were actually selling bumper stickers that said, "Welcome to Port Orange, you're under arrest." You know, enhanced law enforcement is not always the best solution. That's why I always seek to find engineering solution to the problem, such as, you know, road pinching, traffic calming, in some cases, severing roads that cut through. You know, the fastest way to deal with the people cutting through Tibbely at a high rate of speed is to sever it, cut it off in the middle, you have to go one way or the other, you can't go through. But those are things that will take some time, we need to look at the various locations that we know we have issues, and come back with potential solutions. And so, I beg your indulgence to give me until about the March timeframe to put that together with the Sheriff's Department and our engineering staff.
And, you know, and Mr. Peters, I'm fine with that, and you and I talked about this, about engineering solutions, which I'm all for. Tampa has speed bumps in neighborhoods that require you to stop and think about what you're doing. So I'm fine with that, but we, you know, here's the thing, I, we are letting a lot of data bypass us. People are willing right now, because they're so upset, to gather data, and I know that we talked about this also, I know that we talked about what perception is. Cars look like they're going faster than they really are, exhaust on some vehicles make it seem like they're going faster. I really do understand all of that, but we still have an issue right now that, that needs to be addressed, and it's just, and it's not. You can speed in Deltona, and there's, you know, unless somebody's got an outstanding warrant, I think they get a ticket for this, not getting arrested. So, I agree with you, sir, I agree with your engineering take on this, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just saying that my residents, it's a thing with them, so, thank you, I will be fine with that, if the commission is fine with that.
Okay, yes?
If, if I can just jump in again, part of what this study was, it talks about the collaboration, infrastructure, and education, so I look forward to you guys having this, and it talks about how we can slower traffic and things of that like, that's why I thought it would be great for what you're trying to do. But it's gonna take a team effort, I agree.
Okay, so Commissioners, she has requested a workshop on traffic and speeding and level of service. Are we in agreement that we would like to have that, when that can be arranged, or not, with Mr. Peters? Do we want to have that kind of a workshop, yes or no, is the question? Yes? Yes? Commissioner Vasquez, yes or no?
Yes, according to Mr. Peters' schedule.
Ramos?
Yes, according, he mentioned March, unless it's-
All right, sir, you have your direction. And Commissioner McCool, you also asked about Mr. Paradise, who signs off on the Board of Education stuff, I think that that would be a knowledgeable thing for all of us to learn in an email. And the last thing, the Lake Lorraine cleanup, I know there were some issues there, what you can provide for all of us for the Lake Lorraine cleanup, and if they have some sort of an option that they want to, they're not part of the McGarrett cleanup, they don't have anything like that, like McGarrett does, do they? No? Okay. I mean, that's an option as well, so I think those are, those things don't require commission approval. So, thank you, Commissioner McCool. Commissioner Vila-Vasquez, you are on the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to report requests, I would like an update on the bathroom installation on the Lombardi Park. Seems like it's been taking a little bit too long, and my fear is that, because there is no bathroom there, the surrounding areas are being used as a bathroom. So, if you can just give me a status of when that bathroom is going to be put out there. And I also would like an updating, again, my requests don't have to be right now, but also would like an update of our CRA project.
Ms. Vasquez, we are scheduled to come back to the commission as a CRA board here in the next month. It's part of our annual reporting process, and we will be providing a report at that time.
Thank you, that's it, Mayor.
And the bathroom, also, you can just provide that as an update for the entire commission. Commissioner Sosa?
Yeah, I ran into the resident that had asked about the lights at the Keysville Dog Park. The lights in the parking lot were not the main issue, it was the lights within the dog park itself, I guess they were running off the solar. They just wanted to get an update when those lights may be replaced. If you have any kind of an update on that, I'd appreciate it.
The, a number of lights have been ordered because of the supply chain problem. For instance, right out here, we've already replaced one light by the commissioner's parking bay. Unfortunately, the other lights are on back order, a part of the supply chain. We are having that problem all over our park system. We have our bathroom, pre-cut bathroom facility, that requires certification from the state of Florida. The engineer has signed and sealed the plan, but we're waiting on Tallahassee to approve the plan, so that we can get the bathroom, it's done, it just has to have state approval. And so, it is a very frustrating situation right now, partly due to supply chain problems, and partly due to, you know, other issues such as engineers and architects finding them and what have you. So, we are working diligently through these issues, and I beg your patience on these, ma'am.
I don't know, Commissioner, I believe you are referencing the solar lights that are in there. I guess some years ago, they tried this solar project through a lot of the parks. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, those lights lasted a couple of months, and they all went kaput. So the idea, we're not replacing those, but in some of the parks, such as Keysville, we were adding lighting to the basketball courts, which would light some of that surrounding area. But we do have future projects that we want to put in that park to have additional lighting, but those solar lights won't be replaced.
Okay. Do you have anything for the near future, for where the solar lights are within the dog runs itself? Especially like with nowadays, by five-thirty, it's starting to get dark outside, and, you know, a lot of folks get off at work at six. Do we have anything in the interim?
Yes, right now, honestly, when the park is dark, it's really closed, but with the additional of amenities in the park, they may stay open a little bit longer, but you guys will see for our future budget, you know, some, some new ideas that we're coming for lighting for that park.
All right.
That will light that surrounding area.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner King?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If I could jump in on this, it's also an opportunity to answer Ms. McCool's question on the meters. We have an RFQ, RFQed, it's ready to go out on the meter replacement, and also it being done under what's called energy-saving contracts, where the consultant evaluates the potential energy savings, and that savings is used toward part of the costs. I got a little bit of disturbing information today, that Volusia County and the land are struggling to get meters. Now, we have been assured by the Neptune people, that when we are ready to purchase the meters, they will convert the entire operation to producing our thirty-eight thousand some meters on short order, but that particular RFQ will be going out within the next week, week and a half, for the meter replacement. I referenced energy savings, they will also be evaluating a lot of our operations with regard to energy savings options. For instance, at a water plant, do you use a single feed pump, or do you go to what's called a variable frequency drive? The difference is, with the variable frequency, you don't run it full bore, and then cut it off, and then run it full bore. It cycles up, it keeps up that way, and it's more energy efficient, reduce costs. You know, the lighting, you know, solar lights are popular, but they also have their shortcomings, and sometimes it's better to just run straight electrical to the light, a more efficient light fixture. And that is all part of this energy savings effort. As I said earlier, we have a contract that we're bringing back to the commission, hopefully in the next meeting, for the company out of Sanford, it will be doing the eighty egg and the energy savings and that type of thing. Hopefully, like I said, on the January third commission agenda, so that we can get started on some of these energy savings options.
Commissioner King?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that I attended the Volusia County Sheriff's Office graduation of their first class for their brand-new deputies, their new recruits. It was an amazing ceremony. I was very impressed with the recruits, the people that they selected. Several months ago, we went over to, to their grand opening of the facilities, their training facilities, and the first classes now graduated, and they are now, got their badges, which was an amazing ceremony, as the families of those recruits came up on stage and pinned their, their new member of the family as a deputy sheriff. Very impressive. The sheriff did say one thing I thought was always, was pretty cool, and I know I'll remember it, they'll remember forever, and that is, that they will always be number one, first class to graduate. Kudos to our Volusia County Sheriff's Department for putting together the program. Nothing else like it, I don't believe, in the state. And I'd also like to say thank you to all of the businesses in Volusia County who donated funds for that training facility to be built. There was no tax dollars paid out for that training facility, and it is an amazing training facility. So, just want to let you know that. Sheriff Truett Wood, I believe, is doing a great job, and we've got some, some good deputies coming out of that training facility. So, just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on next to city attorney comments. Mr. Fowler, any comments this evening?
No, ma'am, other than to be happy that I'm back in the land of the free. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. City manager? Mr. Peters, any comments this evening?
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple.
Why not?
Just wanted to remind the commission that we are going to have a strategic planning session, now looks like it may be the first Saturday in February. This is an opportunity to review with you all, the- This is an opportunity to review with you all the progress that we have made with regards to the strategic plan that we put in place last spring. Then we're looking to have a, on January 12th, a groundbreaking for the river withdrawal project down on Lake Shore. Our public information office has been working with public work to get some public service announcements out regarding the boat ramp being closed and sending people to the county ramp just down the street. And let's see here, I got notes. I spoke to the city attorney earlier today. We will probably need to have a shade meeting with the commission, either the first or second meeting in January to discuss the upcoming negotiation with the fire union. And so if you want to give you a heads up, we will probably conduct that meeting prior to the regular meeting on the, I would assume, the 17th of January. And let you remind that shade meetings are meetings that are closed to the public, records are kept for later, but it's an opportunity for us to begin the discussion, moving into And we are planning, as I said earlier, to have a workshop on the Parks and Rec programs in January. We have a number of agreements that have either expired or are scheduled to expire over the next 30 to 75 days. And so we want to have a workshop to talk about the direction that we're moving with Parks and Recreation going to the forward. As we talked about during the State of Union, I think it's, I mean, State of City. Sorry, Mayor, I had elevated you there for a second. But, you know, we're going to start talking about, you know, reimagine, redevelop, rediscover Deltona. And a big part of that reimagining and redeveloping is going to be in our Parks and Rec programs. We have already done that with the Building Department, with code compliance, with great success, and we're just going to carry that forward into the Parks and Rec. We have some amazing facilities that just need some TLC, but more importantly, we need to come up with programs for our citizens, such as good senior programs and other programs for our youth and for everybody else in the city. So we're really looking forward to that workshop. That's it for me. Oh, one last thing is that many of you all know I had a very rough week last week, and I want to personally thank Stacy Kiffalo for keeping the shop running while I was out. It's good to know that I got somebody behind me that can run the city in my absence. So thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, sir. Okay, commission comments. Commissioner Sosa, want to knock it out of the park tonight? Start out?
Well, I just want to say, you know, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and a great new year, and we'll see everybody next year.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Villavasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a shout out to the center staff for putting in a great breakfast with Santa for the kids. It was a nice, sold-out event, and they did a really good job. And a big shout out to Parks and Recs for the beautiful holiday event that we had outside. The lighting was absolutely beautiful. And just to add to that, I know that we just got an award for one of the parks, right, for Thornby Park. So congratulations on that. You know, Thornby Park receiving an award from one of the organizations that represents development in parks, right? So congratulations, doing a great job. And I also want to welcome again Captain McDaniels and thank Captain Marino for all the work he did while being here in the city of Deltona. We're going to miss you, but I know I have your number. And I also want to wish again our Commissioner Victor Ramos a happy birthday. And I want to wish everyone out there a happy Merry Christmas and lots of blessings in the coming New Years.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ramos, the birthday boy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do you feel any older today?
I'm 21. I just want to piggyback on what our city manager says as it relates to Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec does have a survey, so I encourage everyone to please be part of this survey. It's part of that start that Mr. Peters is talking about, and we want to hear the input so that we can continue moving forward, making sure that what we're doing with our Parks and Rec, it's what our city really wants and meet the needs to it. So again, please, it's not that long. I took it. It's on Facebook, it's on Instagram, I'm not sure if it's in our website, but please go out to Parks and Rec, take the survey, share the survey, because I think it's important for all of us. And besides that, I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. It's been a great year. It's been a challenging year, but I think overall, there was an article that came out today in the News Journal that at first the headline looked a little bit confusing, but I think overall, the content of it, it talks about, you know, some of the success that we've had. Yes, we've had some bump in the road, but I think overall, we're working together, and I think at the end of the day, that's the goal, to be able to keep moving forward. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and see hopefully everyone next year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCool?
Yes, I would like to wish everyone also a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I will tell you, this week has been really fired up on social media. I know that it makes our city manager crazy on the social media, but it's a great platform, and it's been a great platform this week for residents to have input, to have dialogue, and just, you know, it's a, we've been communicating. Communication has opened, and I tell you that, that while it is not always a good thing, at least people are talking, and I will give them that. So keep communicating, we're listening. And I would also, again, like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Birthday boy, congratulations. I'm sure there's a nice stick waiting for you somewhere. Welcome back, Skip. It's good to have you back. And I just, it's been a challenging year, and it's been a great year of growth as a city. I'm really proud of what we've done. I, reading the article in the newspaper, in the News Journal, I heard that I cheered loudly when we were at the State of the Union, I mean, State of the City, because I'm excited about what we're doing and what's coming, and residents are talking about it also, the new growth that we have. So I'm excited for us, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to just remind everybody, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of those people, organizations, the city, everyone who has contributed this year to Reefs Across America. From what I understand at this point, we have raised enough money to place 900 reefs, give or take some, on graves at Deltona Memorial Gardens. That doesn't do them all. We need about 1,700. They have 1,700 service people buried there. So we're not going to make all of it, but it's way better than what we did last year. So thank you so much for what you've done to raise that money. The next thing is to come out on December the 18th at noon time, 12:00 noon. There will be a short ceremony, 15, maybe 20 minutes long, and then we will ask the community to help us lay those reefs on the graves of our veterans. It is a moving time. It's very emotional. I get choked up every year going out there to do it. Because when you lay a reef, we ask people, when, before you lay that reef on that grave, that you call out that person's name. Just thinking about the sacrifice of those people and thinking about that name, getting ready to say it, is all it takes for me. But to hear all around you in the cemetery, people calling out a veteran's name is, it's like the angels are singing, and I don't believe angels sing. I think they say. But besides that, come out December 18th at 12:00 noon and be part of the ceremony. Bring your kids, bring your youth out. Let them see and hear and learn and remember what it is like to live in a free country and the sacrifice that is made for us to do that. It's an awesome time for that. So please come out and participate. Again, thank you, and everyone, please have a Merry, Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and above all, please be safe. We get crazy sometimes when we get ready to celebrate a new year. Don't do things you ought not to do. You know, if you've got firecrackers, that's your deal. But don't substitute shooting a gun in your neighborhood for a firecracker. It happens way too often, and it's too often that people get hurt. So please don't do that. Have a safe and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Okay, just got a few things. Couple things have already been addressed, so great State of the City, kudos, Mayor. It was awesome, staff, you all did a wonderful job. I think everybody is very excited, and it is an exciting time. Yes, Dana, you were a little vocal, but that's why we love you. Congratulations, Parks Rec, Thornby Park, recognized by our Florida P&amp;Z for all their wonderful improvements. It was great to see that today. You know, as we keep saying, things are happening. Two weekends in a row, the light-up display, you guys are just killing it, Parks. You know, I don't know when you guys are sleeping, but you're doing an amazing job, and I'm sure you're excited for the first of the year to get a little bit of a break. But it is, it's not going unnoticed. No, I'm not going to say, old man, but happy birthday, Victor. Thank you for, you know, spending your birthday night with us. Saturday night, Deltona Woods and Arbor Ridge, Santa's coming to town. We've got the drive-through Santa going through. We'll be collecting the toys for the giveaways. You know, we're doing, we're going to be splitting them up between two different organizations this year. So if you're in Deltona Woods or Arbor Ridge, you know, have the lights on, music going. It's a great time. We look forward to seeing it. It's going to start at 6:30. And Dana, you are correct. You know, there's organizations out on Facebook that are so great and informative, but then there's a lot of information out there that can be a little misleading and off. So I'm going to give a couple of recommendations because, well, there's a few individuals out there making some accusations still. So I'm going to give you a recommendation. My recommendation to you is go to the Florida or our Volusia County Property Appraisers website. If you have a question about an address, put the address in there, and you know, it's going to pop up with the information on that parcel, and you'll be amazed at what you can find. You're going to find who bought a property, when and where, and you might want to use that information instead of some false, misleading information that's out there. So it might just help you so you have a little bit more accurate information. I'm going to wish everybody a wonderful holiday season. As Commissioner King said, be mindful of what you're doing out there, especially on the New Year. Veterans, it's hard for them when the fireworks are going off, the weapons are gunning off. Animals, it's hard for them. So yeah, we want to bring in the New Year, and we want to have a good time, but be respectful of your neighbors, be respectful of everybody around you. We can all have fun, but we can have it safe. So I just, everybody have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And in closing, another year has passed pretty much, and it's hard to look back to where we started and where we thought we would be and where we are. And I just want to thank a lot of people right now, since it's the last meeting of the year. This commission, we've been amazing. We've had our, we've had our discussions and requests and disagreements, but everyone is still smiling. Maybe not always all the time, but I think that all of you represent the people of Deltona extremely well. I think that you, that you take it in your heart to do the right thing, and that is what, what the residents have asked for, to be heard and to have their concerns addressed. It may not go the way they like it, may not go the way we like it, but we are out there doing what we can to make Deltona not only a better place today or in 2022, but for the next five, 10, 20 years, so that what we do up here today is really a positive impact on the future. I want to thank our staff. I want to thank our acting city manager, Mr. Peters. I want to thank Skip Fowler and Marcia Siegel George, our attorneys. I want to thank Stacy Kiffalo, you're going to kill me if I pronounce it wrong again, but for just coming on board. You've, you've had to pick up a lot and fast, and you've done a great job. And I know that for staff, a lot of the change is hard. It's hard for everybody. But everyone is, has stepped up in parks and in code enforcement and building and in finance and in HR, where there've been a lot, a lot of changes. And I know that, I speak for myself, but I feel that the rest of the commission understands that it's not an easy time when there's change. And we really appreciate everything that everyone has done in public works and in all the departments that keep the city running. And maybe we don't see that because we expect the roads to be good and the water to flow and so forth, but there's always somebody behind that. And I just want to say thank you for everyone in staff that has done such a great and wonderful job. And most important, I want to thank the residents for having the faith in us to govern and to try to do what our vision is, but most importantly, what the vision is for the city, to make it a sustainable city. Everyone up here has had great comments, and I don't want to belabor this anymore, but this holiday season, remember what it is. It's not what you have, it's not the material things, it's how you can reach out and help those that maybe need it, whether it's emotionally, mentally, financially, physically, it doesn't matter. There's always a little bit that we can give of ourselves to those that don't have and that may be lacking in another way. And that's what the holiday season is for me. And we try to, try to pay that a little bit forward. And I know that you all do up here too, for what you give to the city. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you to the residents, to staff, and above all, to my fellow commissioners. And happy birthday, Commissioner Ramos, who you share this with my mother, who has, who just has wished Commissioner Ramos more than one happy birthday today because they share the same day. Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be safe. We are adjourned.